Four, three, two, one. Evening and welcome to a special meeting of the North Hampton School Committee, Monday, November ninth, two thousand and twenty. This meeting is being held as an online Zoom meeting pursuant to Governor Baker's emergency order modifying the state's open meeting law. I'm Mayor David Narcoitz.
Holy smokes, one engine!
I would just ask folks joining the meeting to please mute yourselves until such time that there's time for public comment. So we have essentially, this is a special meeting and the the primary purpose of the meeting tonight was a discussion and possible vote on a revised hybrid learning plan for the North Hampton Public School District. We have an agenda that's laid out with a roll call vote, public comment, then discussion and possible vote on the revised hybrid learning plan, and then we have an executive session also on the agenda. It is going to be my plan this evening as chair to first, to have a presentation first on the revised hybrid learning plan and then have public comment, just so that people actually will be able to comment on on this on this revised plan and then come back to the school committee for deliberation and any possible vote following the public comment. So with that, I'll ask the clerk to please call the role of the school committee.
Member Voss.
Present.
Member Gold.
Present.
Mayor Narcoitz.
Present.
Member Busansky.
Thank you for a little bit.
Present.
Member Fallon.
Present.
Member Seraphy Cox.
Present.
Member Condon.
Present.
Member Levy.
Present.
Member Kaufman.
Present.
And Member Goldman.
Present.
Your Honor, you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you very much. Again, just a reminder to folks to please mute yourself so that we can focus on the agenda before the school committee. As I indicated at the outset, we have one agenda on tonight's one primary item on tonight's agenda, and that is the discussion and possible vote on a revised hybrid learning plan. I'm actually going to move first to the presentation of that revised hybrid learning plan by Member Gold and any other folks who are assisting him in that. And then we will move to public comment and then we'll move back into discussion and possible vote on that plan. So I'll turn now to Member Gold. Member Gold.
All right. Hi, thanks. Is my audio okay?
Yes.
Great. All right. So thanks very much and thanks to everyone who's here and attending and has provided immense feedback to the school committee and the school community. And who has provided feedback to the school committee over the last couple of weeks and certainly this last week. And first, I'd like to just acknowledge, and I think it's something that we've all understood in the school committee and that and as you saw in the letter that was shared with the community on Friday, that we clearly, it could be frustrating and unsettling to have received short notice on potential changes and what have you. I do want to share that this is all meant, it occurred with the intention of making sure we're being as inclusive as possible in the process and ensuring that all ideas are on the table and were considered. By no means was it an attempt to delay and pause or cancel the hybrid. It was just an effort to ensure that the hybrid plan was thoroughly thought out. And so with that being said, there's a lot of information when it comes to the hybrid plan and so I wanted to, that are being considered and that Nace brought to the table last week, as the letters that went home said, for a half-day plan. And so to help organize all this information, Annie, did you get that most recent link that I sent for the website?
I did, and I sent it to the committee.
Okay, great. And so hopefully, I was hoping to be able to share it on the screen as it's a public document, a public site for everyone to.
Okay, just give me a moment.
Sure, absolutely.
Again, if I can ask people to please mute themselves. I'm gonna mute everybody. Okay, so I muted everybody and I'll ask you to unmute Ronnie.
Great.
Okay, great. Again, folks coming into the meeting, if you could please mute yourselves.
And so, yeah, there's a, wanted to have a presentation put up on the screen shortly. Annie will share it. It is a public site that everyone can get to. The website will be on the screen shortly and then that has all the different, as many details as we possibly can have available to us and information regarding the hybrid plans.
Ronnie, I apologize that for some reason, and I can share my screen and show you, but this page isn't loading.
Could you, could you go to, I just emailed you a link, it's WWW. It's a really short one.
Okay. You just did it, was it?
Yeah, just a couple of minutes ago, yeah, I gave you the.
Okay, okay, let me find it. Here it is. Okay, that came up.
Great.
Does everybody see that? Ronnie, does that work for you?
Yes, it does. And hopefully, the public is able to see this as well. If you see in the top left corner, if you're trying to view this on your own browser and you're able to click through it as you want, the site is publicly accessible at WWW, as you see in the top left corner, dot bit dot ly slash NPS Hybrid Plan. This site was put together in order to provide the community support and understanding of the two hybrid models. And there's a page for the half-day model that was brought up for consideration as well as what would be the current full-day model that was already on the table. And so I was gonna, the, the union, Nace had an opportunity to look through, share a schedule and go through some frequently asked questions. As did the administrators, they had a chance to go through the full day's hybrid schedule and go through some frequently asked questions. And so I was hoping to call on those. Really, my goal is just to help facilitate this conversation and information. And so with that being said, if Andrea is on, I was hoping to have us go through the half-days plan. And Annie, if you could click to the half-days hybrid button at the top. And if Andrea's not with us yet, I can present it as best as possible.
Me here, Ronnie.
Oh, great. Thanks, Andrea. And so as you could all see on here, on the left hand, yeah, Andrea, if you wanna, would you like to take it away and kind of describe this to the community?
Sure, I'll try to be as simple as I can. It basically falls, the, the suggestion came from staff members after hearing from Dr. Allen, who is from the Harvard Healthie Buildings, and when he was discussing the dangers of having unmasked eating in the buildings. And so this was kind of a plan that came out of the concerns about having students eating in the buildings as well as some other logistical things about trying to keep specials remote and Title One interventions remote at the elementary school. So those were many of the key components that fed into teachers developing this plan, which is following the AAOBB plan. But instead of it being a full day that includes lunch, it would be a truncated day of about three hours in the morning where students would then be able to get a grab-and-go lunch to go home. This plan also came out of the desire to provide an equitable learning plan for students that were staying fully remote. There were a lot of concerns from educators that came that our students that couldn't come in person as part of the hybrid plan would basically be missing out on a lot of the education that they have been currently receiving through the remote learning that's been going on since the beginning of the year. And so what this plan does is it has students come in for three hours in the morning if they choose the hybrid plan and then they would get their lunch and be able to bring that home and then come back online and have synchronous education for the remainder of the afternoon. And that would be able to include the students that weren't in person in the morning and the students that were fully remote. What this plan does is it allows, like I said, the equitable delivery of instruction to students, no matter which plan their families need to choose for their own health and well-being. It keeps staffs, members safe from needing to supervise unmasked periods indoors when the students are eating. And it also allows their specials to stay remote and it, it also minimizes the amount of transitions that are happening. And a lot of our educators, especially for the smallest children in our schools, a lot of our educators were concerned about little ones having to be masked and staying in their, you know, six-foot bubble for an extended period of time throughout the day. A six-hour day to be masked is is really asking a lot of our students, especially because school is gonna look very different. And I know you've heard from educators talking about what their classrooms are looking like. I know we've spoken with kindergarten teachers and early childhood educators that are saying it's, it's very different in the classrooms than it is in a typical year. So pandemic education looks really different and expecting students to be able to maintain their focus in that really intense, you know, safety requirements, we thought was was really unfair. One of the things Dr. Allen said was that if students are eating indoors, they shouldn't speak, they shouldn't be talking, and the educators should stand by a doorway or an open window. And anybody who's been in an elementary school lunchtime period, you could imagine how cruel that would be. So, so this half-day plan gives three hours of really intensive instruction without having to have many transitions. We've been told that, you know, when students use the bathroom, only one student at a time can go into the bathroom. We're thinking about, you know, creating, you know, lining up to-go places where we have to keep students socially distant. All of those transitions to eat away at the instructional time. So if we minimize the transitions, we can maximize the instruction. And then we can also provide the equitable, equitable instruction of the students in the afternoon getting that synchronous learning with their teachers. And I'm certainly happy to answer any other questions.
Great. I, my, my thinking was to first have an opportunity to see both the half-day plans and then as it relates, the full-day hybrid plan, and then look at a instructional time comparison that we have just to get all the information out there as best we can and then hopefully have a, open it up to questions, if that's okay, with the, with the school committee. And so, thanks so much, Andrea, for sharing all that. Annie, if you could switch to the full days hybrid plan, just so folks understand what that looks like. And I was hoping if one of the principals was available to briefly, you know, or take the time you need to describe what this plan looks like to the community. Is there, I don't know if Principal Madden might at all be available?
I believe Principal Madden's on the call.
I'm here, yes. I'm here.
Thanks, Principal Madden.
So I am happy to share this full-day model and I was, I have public comments too, so I'm a little bit confused about whether or not I should share my public comments or or not at this time. But I, I'll just try to talk about the facts of this plan. I guess our hope in this was that we were following the A B model, but trying to provide as much teacher support as possible to all of our students. And that, that was certainly, that was certainly the goal because we hear all the time from caregivers how we have many students who are struggling. And so this, the full-day model would support students, both the remote students and the in-person students at a, at a much greater level of hours of support. And I guess I feel as though we have an educational obligation to do the most that we can with the resources that we have. And I, I think I can speak for all the principals and that we're, we're completely committed to working through any concerns that any teachers have in this model and trying to make sure that everybody is safe and we're working out systems that will work out smoothly. But I think we feel pretty committed to making sure that students are receiving the most robust education that we possibly can within a hybrid model. And so that's, I think, what we were thinking about here. Happy to answer any questions.
Appreciate it. All right. And then now if, Annie, if you can click to the instructional time comparison. As one of the big things I know that has been a conversation is ensuring instructional time and what is available to students in each of the plans. And so if you can scroll down a little bit, and this is for public viewing. The very first column, it shows you what pre-COVID NPS kindergarten through fifth grade was like. And so you could see, as you go down, it details for each of them. The first row is the approximate daily start time and end times. That's approximate based, because we don't know with busing and all that. Come the hybrid plan, but it was a nine to three o'clock day for six hours. It shows you where, you know, the time for lunch. The third row is the teacher instructional time. The fourth row is the frequency students have direct contact with the teacher. And the last row is the student-to-teacher ratio, being able to kind of really wrap her heads around that piece. So if you scroll back up to the top for a second. It shows right there that the, again, the first gray column is pre-COVID NPS. The white middle column, that's a comparison, that looks at the data for the full-day model for K to five that Principal Madden was just discussing. It shows two columns, one for in-person students remaining with their assigned teacher and another one for fully remote students who are remaining with their assigned teacher. Hopefully, as everyone saw in the letter that was sent home by the school committee, that there is in development an option for a district-wide remote teacher for students who wish to attend remote all day. So that's outside of this table because those students would be remote all day with the district-wide position. But for students who do want to stay with their assigned teacher, in-person or fully remote, that's what those two columns are for. And then the last two gray columns are the instructional time comparison for the, I should say, half-day model. My apologies on the typing there, said a half-day model. And that shows you all that same data and information for those two columns as well and looks at the frequency and the student-to-teacher ratio and the number of in-persons, and the number of hours and time of teacher instructional time. Because that was a big piece of the conversation. And so with that being said, at this point, I was hoping to, that we can now open it up to any questions from the school committee for the two presentations of these hybrid plans.
Okay, um, I know we've got hands up for public comments, so I'll need to see. I see Member Levy has her hand up. I did want to just ask by way of clarification, just to make sure I understand, just for framing this. The school committee has already voted on a hybrid plan, which was the, which was basically the white column one that you just described, which is the, the full day, two full day plan. And so the, that's already sort of been voted on. So the question tonight is, would we want to choose a modification to that plan, which is the half-day plan? So just so we understand what's, what we're actually, why we actually called this meeting to consider this different plan. Member Levy, you had your hand up from the school committee.
Thanks. I wanted to just make a, I hope, clarification to folks and also make sure that I have this right so that folks have this right as well about students choosing to remain remote. I do also have questions. I wasn't sure if I should also ask those questions or if we should save our questions until after the public comment. We want to do questions now, too?
Well, I think if they would help, if there's anything that you were confused about or needed more information about, if it helped to illuminate, because obviously the public comment will not have a question portion. So if you, to the extent you can be concise about it, that'd be great.
Okay, I will try and be concise. The one thing I really want to point out though, before I ask my questions, and I hope administrators and Andrea will help clarify any, any misunderstandings I have here so that people understand. And I actually wonder, can you, Annie, stop sharing the screen, please? So the clarification that I want to make, thank you, is that the, in, in both of these plans, students who, who choose to remain wholly remote will have two options. One is to continue with their current remote plan, the way that it's going right now. The other is to switch, or sorry, to, to stay with their current class and follow what is described in these plans as the remote-only students, which would mean a different experience than what they're having now, but remaining with their current class. And I want to just make it clear to folks that that will be an option for, so all students who are remaining, choosing to remain remote will have that option. Am, am I, and I just want to make sure I understand that correctly. Will, John, will you give me a thumbs up if that is correct?
I don't think that's correct. If you look at either the two full-day model or the two half-day model, you'll see that the amount of hours of instruction for remote students is less than it currently is. So that's one change in either model. With respect to whether or not students can remain with their teacher, I think you already addressed in your, in your earlier comments that there may be some changes of teacher. And I think that would happen in either model as well.
Okay, so at some point, we had talked about there being a fully remote teacher for each grade so that the students who want to remain fully remote could have a fully remote teacher and, and keep their current hybrid learning, or sorry, their current remote learning plan as it's going right now. Is that off the table?
So no, that, that is on the table, but that would be a change. It would be a change in the, in the teacher potentially that the student currently has. There also would have to be some, I think, some guidelines around how large that class could be. It would be a little bit, you know, unwieldy to have a single remote class with, you know, seventy or eighty kids in it.
Sure. Okay. I just want to, I want to make sure that families understand that there, there would be that option, that the option to do the fully remote model as it is now with potentially a different teacher or going to the remote-only model as presented here with potentially their same teacher, as long as their same teacher is not only remote. So that's one thing I just want to make sure folks, folks hear. I, I have a few questions and I wonder if both Sarah and, I hope it's okay, Sarah, that you're now the spokesperson for this model. I hope that Sarah.
Right, right.
Okay, thank you. I hope Sarah and Andrea could both speak to what would happen in these models respectively for our high-needs students, students who are currently going in in person. What would their days look like in, in the full-day hybrid model, Sarah, and in the half-day hybrid model, Andrea?
So I'm happy to go first. So there, the time, it depends because you have to understand that all the behind needs students have different IEPs and different service plans. And so I can't tell you what would happen for all of those students. So I have a whole variety of students, as we all do in our elementary schools, coming in for different amounts of service. And so for all of them, except for the ones who are currently there full day now, their, their time would increase. So I have a whole number of students who are just come in for drop-in services. And so their amount of time would increase because they would be able to come in for full days where now we're not able to have many of our high-needs students come in for full days. And so they would be able to come in for at least two full days and then continue to receive their services on the other three days during the week. So their time would, would increase. Certainly, the amount of support that they would get from school would increase for all of those students, except for the ones who are currently already there full days.
So for the ones that are currently already there full days, what would that do to their experience?
It, it shouldn't change their experience.
Okay, thanks. And what about you, Andrea?
So I think the same. I don't think this model would change the services for the students that are currently receiving in-person services. For the students, I think one of the differences with the half-day model that is different than the two full-day model is that students that are not currently receiving services, as Sarah mentioned, that may be high-needs but couldn't, were kind of either on a waiting list or there wasn't space to allow them to, to come in for in-person services. Those students could possibly, depending on the numbers, receive four mornings a week instead of two and still be with their same teacher because they could come in with both the A cohort and the B cohort. So a student that is particularly in, struggling with remote learning could actually, and this could be even students that do not have IEPs, they could possibly, depending on the numbers of the students in their class that are coming in, in the hybrid model, they could potentially come in for four mornings a week. The concern that some staff members had about our high-needs students coming in four mornings a week under the full-day model is that their own teacher would only be teaching for two days a week. If they came in four days a week, they still, they would have to be with a different teacher because their own teacher is only teaching for two days in person because the other two days, the teacher would be teaching remotely to the, to the remote students. So that was a concern that some of our high, our, our most students with the highest needs would actually have to transition between two different classes if they were going to maintain the four days of in-person. As opposed to with the half-day model, they could stay with their own class and be in person for four days, for half-days.
Okay, thank you. I have two more questions and then I'll pass it to my colleagues. One is about the ESPs in the, in the two full-day model. This is either a question for Sarah or potentially the superintendent. It's, it's one grouping of questions about ESPs. This only counts as one of my questions. First, how many classes would, would you think be required?
I love that meeting, yes.
ESP.
All right, let's go.
Because they would need to be in two classrooms at a time, given the current numbers.
I can only speak for Ryan Road. And, and that really, I guess there would be three, but those classes currently have an ESP anyway. And so I, you'd have to ask the other principals. I know that they've met with John around the, the staffing concerns, but we wouldn't need to hire any more staff to, to support the students at all.
Okay. And Superintendent Provost, do you know the answer for the other schools?
I, I don't know the answer specifically for the other schools. I don't have that on my list right now. But I do know that, and speaking with some of the other principals, there would be some staff that need to be hired. For Ryan Road, I think that they have the staff that they need, but we would potentially need some positions for the other elementary schools.
Okay. And then are, would ESPs actually be teaching? What would be the role of ESPs?
So the role of ESPs wouldn't be very different than it currently is because we have ESPs who often cover classes for special ed meetings. We have really talented ESPs, several who are already certified teachers. So in terms of the role of ESPs, I don't see that it would, it's really to support the learning, to follow the lead of the teacher, to follow through on a lesson that's being taught. And so I don't see that as changing at all. And as I said, at Ryan Road, only three classes would require any ESP support. And I'm not, I'm not one hundred percent sure that that's even the case because we do have several walls that are collapsible. And so our rooms. And so our rooms can be enlarged, which is nice, because it makes our spaces more flexible.
Okay, thanks. And then my last question, grouping of questions, is about eating. And I understand the concern and that this really comes from the data about the potential problems of having kids eat in classrooms. So I'm wondering, for the full day hybrid model, is there, how many schools have the potential of using the cafeteria? What other options might there be so that students aren't eating in their classrooms, having to not talk during lunch? Could we get tents? Could we be outside? What are the, what are our creative options? If the teacher's greatest concern is students eating in the classroom, could that be avoided in the full day model?
So I can speak to that a little bit. I did ask Meredith O'Leary to weigh in on this. And she said that she felt that cafeterias could be used as long as we weren't overloading them. We would need to still maintain social distancing. I think we would still require the students to not speak during lunch, because they would be unmasked. And I just think that that is, that's the safest way to do it. I asked principals to begin looking at whether they could create enough lunch waves to utilize their cafeterias without overloading them. But I think that work is still ongoing. I don't know if any of the principals on the call right now can answer that piece.
Well, I feel confident I could work something out.
Okay.
I mean, but the nice part is, is that the plan is that you're easing in, too, right? We're not taking, we're not getting everybody all at one time. So it gives you a little bit of time in terms of how many students there are in the building and trying to figure out what's going to work the most smoothly.
Okay. Can you confirm, Superintendent Provost? My understanding was that the Leeds cafeteria was one of the spaces that the ventilation was not up to standard. Is that true?
I have a report. Let me just find that, and I'll come back to you if you want to go on to another question or other person. I'll raise my blue hand when I have that.
Right.
I do, I do want to say, too, that we've had lots of full-time students who have been eating, and there haven't been, you know, there haven't been any issues. Kids have been extremely careful in wearing masks, even full days they're wearing masks. We're certainly utilizing the outdoors. We're being pretty creative in terms of making sure that people are feeling safe. And I guess I feel committed to making sure that, I just keep supporting all the educators who keep doing an amazing job. I'm just really blown away by all the work that everybody has been doing.
Thank you. My last set of questions about eating is actually for Andrea and the half day model. I'm curious what, I mean, I'm thinking about kindergarten, first grade, preschool, who have snacks. So sending kids home for lunch doesn't actually remove the need for kids to eat in the classroom. So what's the plan for that, is my first question. And then my second question is about whether kids are allowed to eat on buses, because I'm having trouble thinking of kindergartners who are going to take the bus home, not being able to eat until they actually get home. That's a long time to go without lunch.
The answer to the question about snack was, I've spoken with a lot of educators who talked about, you know, one snack time is typically a lot shorter than what it would take to eat a whole meal. And then many educators were talking about that snack is a lot easier to take outdoors if the weather allows. And many educators feel that that would be a safe alternative. And then also, you know, things can be more easily handheld when it's a snack, a granola bar or a, you know, goldfish or a tube of yogurt or a cheese stick, those kinds of things that are easier to eat that doesn't take a more extended period of time. And it's also not as difficult to open and lay out, and you have your milk, and you have your vegetable, and you have your utensils, and those kinds of things that typically would come from a full meal. I think that that is, and if the students had their snack, they would potentially be able to be okay waiting until they got home, until they ate lunch. But I don't know the answer about buses.
Okay. Oh, I see Tammy might have the answer to that.
Hi. Due to choking hazards, we are not allowed to eat on the bus at all. That's federal mandated, so that's kind of going to answer that question really quick.
Great, thank you for the answer. I just want to give a big thank you to the teachers who are working incredibly hard and the administrators who are working incredibly hard and the caregivers who are working incredibly hard. There is no easy solution, and I really appreciate folks doing their best to come up with a solution. I have lots of questions, but I see that all of my colleagues have their hands up, so I will yield to the next person on the school committee. Thank you.
Okay, Member Condon, you had your hand up next among school committee members.
Thank you, Mayor. I spoke to Dr. Provost about this a little bit, but wanted to bring it to this forum as well. The half day schedule doesn't factor in any travel time during the day for students. So students are required to have a certain amount of time on learning in the school day. So if you are taking out a chunk of time in the middle of the day, we're going to have to extend the day either in the morning or after school to make up for that missed time to ensure that students have the time on learning that they're missing on the bus at 11 or 12, or whatever time they're going home in the middle of the day. So if we think about that half day schedule, we're also going to have to think about extending the day in some way. Just wanted to put that out there.
Hey, thank you, Member Condon. Member Voss, you have your hand up next, school committee questions.
Hi, thank you. And I want to just echo the thanks that Member Levy said to all those groups and to also just point out that since our vote to, less than two weeks ago, between the alt team, NACE members, school committee members, Dr. Provost, there have been hundreds and hundreds, if not thousands, of people hours spent trying to figure out what works best for the most people and to support everyone. And I just, I thank you all. I guess I want to just say, I think there's a lot of progress in what got presented tonight from, in the thinking from two weeks ago. And I really appreciate that we are finding ways to support all of our community, including remote learners. And I think that was summarized correctly by Member Levy. And in addition, I very respectfully just disagree a little bit, Mayor, that the first column that was presented was not exactly what we voted on two weeks ago. It's related to it, but I think a lot of progress has been made. So I just wanted to make a few comments of where I see changes, so that if I'm wrong, it can be pointed out, but the community can appreciate it. And my comments aren't meant to side with either plan. They're just meant to point out observations as somebody who's been part of a lot of conversations. I think both plans do a much better job having kids learn with their teachers, whether it's asynchronous or synchronous every single day, and don't leave them on their own for extended days in a row. And I think that's really important. So in other words, when the kids aren't in school, they're still connecting with their teacher. The plan that I had understood two weeks ago, on a day that you weren't in school, you were really, you could be away from your teacher Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And that was concerning to a lot of people. In terms of the full day plan, I had similar concerns about the lunch, and I'm happy to hear some of the thoughts behind it. And I just want to really encourage us to let teachers be creative in how they handle lunch. If some teachers want to take kids outside, to do the best they can. And I think that's something principals and teachers can work out. But I want to just echo concerns about kids talking without masks and eating without masks. And thank you for that. And then, I'm just looking at my list here. Another observation, and again, I'm not taking sides. I'm just pointing out a difference between the half day plan and the two full days, is the half day plan would have teachers working directly with a very small number of kids at a time. So a child might be in for three hours and have a teacher with eight classmates. And the full day plan would be a much bigger class. So that's just a trade-off. And then, so there's a much smaller teacher to student ratio on those half days. And that was just something that's been part of our conversations. And I think I had one question, that was all I needed to say. Oh, I know, I also just wanted maybe Andrea to clarify. The time, the time with the teachers, when I look at the hours, it seems to me that the hours that were presented for the full day plan include specials, and I'm not sure if the half day plan included the special hours. And I'm just curious if they're as far different as what it appeared. And that's everything I had. Thank you, everyone.
I didn't add up the actual, I didn't do the adding for the number of hours. I know that in the three hours of instructional time in the morning in the half day plan, the students would not have their specials then. So that would be a solid three hours of instruction. And then the specials would be another 40 minutes of remote time at another time during the day. And then I'm assuming the full day, the full day plan, 40 of those minutes would be for the students at specials.
Thank you. Maybe Member Gold could, if he's the one that added the hours up, help me just understand if those hours are really comparable. It just, it feels, they feel a little bit too far apart. And I'm not sure where the specials fit in in the half day and where those hours get counted. Because I know they're not happening while the kids are in school for their time with the teachers.
Yeah, sure. I mean, if Annie, if you could, just for the visual folks out there, if you could share that instructional time comparison page.
Hold on a minute.
Thanks. And for those of you who potentially are joining late, when Annie does share the website, it is publicly available at the link that is at the top left of the screen when she shares it. It's the one that starts with the bit.ly. And so, yeah, Member Voss, if you want to let me know, because the last, so the last two gray columns are the half day model. And those 10 hours don't include the specials time. The specials time would be in addition to that, that's for sure. Yes, those 10 hours only included the actual in-person plus the synchronous time.
So I think my question then is, I think the 23 hours per week in the white does include the specials. And how many hours a week is a child in special? So I think you would add probably to both the 10 and the 7, whatever number that is, and then we could compare these.
So the only challenge with that, and so I initially, if anyone saw the page like a little bit ago, you would have seen it showed 13 hours and 20 minutes. And 10 hours, it used to look like with that included, the only issue with the half day plan is if students had specials in the morning, then they wouldn't have specials that day, unless they were offered some sort of asynchronous specials in the afternoon. You know, maybe if a teacher, if a specials teacher did a video or some sort, or maybe there wasn't a way to accommodate specials in the afternoon, because it's more of a general PE lesson that is applicable across schools, if you know what I mean, versus specific to a classroom. So, yeah, that would go up three, the total for four days of the time, it was at 40 minutes, sorry, the three hours and 20 minutes was five days a week. So the four days of 40 minutes is what it would be, 160 minutes. So additional, yeah, what would that be here? Two hours and 40 minutes each.
So I guess then, sorry to interrupt, but I guess then the full remote student, because the specialist time is not added on there either. So there would be additional time for those two days.
Thank you. And just, I'll summarize my take on this, and then I'll be done. So if we add the specials in, which my understanding was we'd figure out how to do them not during the time with the teacher, and if that was possible to figure out, the remote hours, the remote only students don't look that different in the hours. And the in-person students do look quite different. And I think, you know, you sit there and you think, well, how could that be if we are not adding teachers or this or that? But I think the big difference between them is in one case, we have more students with the teacher during the day, and the other case, it's a much more, it's a much smaller group. So that's just why that comes out that way. And that makes a lot of sense. Thanks.
Okay, the next member is Member Seraphie Cox.
Thank you. First off, I want to thank all of the members of the public who are here today. I know that it's been, this evening, I know it's been a bit of a wild ride and a bit of short notice. So I just really want to appreciate you taking the time out of your evenings to be here, as well as all of the hard work that has gone into these two plans on the part of many, many people throughout the district. I have a couple of questions that have come up from our conversation. One is, I think, for Principal Madden about the ESP who would be working, you know, in the room that is, sorry, the class that is split between two rooms. So a teacher is in one room and the ESP is in the other room. And then they would switch, was my understanding. But if the ESP is not in the room when the teacher is giving the lesson, how would the ESP know how to adequately support the lesson that the teacher gave?
So, I don't know. You have to remember that there are only three, at least at Ryan Road, there are only three classrooms that would require the ESP. I'm not sure what the numbers are in the other, but it really would, what it would mean is that there would be more than 11 people in a given class that requested in-person. And so those numbers aren't particularly high. And so I don't want people to have the idea that this is going to be happening in every classroom, because that's not the case. So all of our classrooms, but one another, all of the classrooms. And so it's, I guess I see it as an extended part of the classroom and not a completely separate room. And I don't see them necessarily switching. I mean, I was a teacher for 23 years, and if I had to have 14 students with the support of an ESP that I would support and educate during a day, that doesn't seem particularly, I mean, it's a really important work, but it certainly feels manageable to be able to educate 14 or 15 students in two spaces. And you might even bring them outside and have them all together. I mean, I think what I'm increasingly amazed at is the creativity of our teachers to find really wonderful ways to engage all of our students. And so that part doesn't concern me at all with the caliber of teachers that we have in terms of taking the education of 14 students, whether they're in all in one space or spread out. That doesn't seem unmanageable at all for any of our educators.
Okay. I, so I think at other schools, there would be, from the numbers that I have seen, if I'm remembering correctly, there would be more. Like, maybe there's only three at your school, but of course, spread out across the district, there would be more. So certainly, it wouldn't be in every class, but. Okay, well, I don't really feel like I have an answer to my question. I do hear that you are confident in the educators to find an answer, but it sounds like we don't have an answer to that question quite yet. I did, I was struck by Member Condon's question about time on learning with the half day model being as how the transportation would need to happen in the middle of the day rather than at the end of the day. And it struck me that it was a question for Andrea Gito, and I wondered if Andrea could take the time to answer that question.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question?
So if I understood Member Condon's question correctly, and Member Condon, feel free to correct me if I get your question wrong. It was that because the transportation would happen during the middle of the day, normally that transportation would happen after 3 o'clock for most elementary school students. So because that transportation going home is happening in the middle of the day, that it would cut into the time on learning in your plan. And I'm wondering if you can speak to how your plan continues time on learning requirements or addresses time on learning. Or addresses time on learning requirements.
It's my understanding that, um, time on learning needs to be, um, I think it was five hours at the elementary level. Um, in order to be, uh, at least grades one. One and up, um, is five hours a day. Um, and Dr. Provost can correct me if that's wrong. Um, and so if the students are in person for three hours, then that would, and that is full. Educational time. So that's not including lunch and recess and so on. And so then that would mean that an additional two hours of work would need to be completed, done. Um, for the students to achieve that five hours a, a day. Um, and the way this plan is, it has the students with three hours of the morning and then an hour and a half of synchronous time. Which would only require an additional half hour of asynchronous time in order for that to be a full day of learning. So if that half hour of asynchronous time was outside of the. You know, what would be traditional school hours, it would still, um, meet the time on learning requirements. The other thing is, um, in the full day model, lunch is forty-five minutes. And I know it's listed as thirty on the chart. Um, and so that could also be kind of part of that travel time. Most elementary students don't, uh, take that long for eating their lunch. And so if you consider our students have, and I guess Tammy, I think would probably be able to answer this question. But I'm guessing about anywhere from a fifteen, you know, or ten to twenty minute bus ride home. Um, I'm not sure exactly, Tammy, if you, if you have numbers on that. Um, but that could fall within that forty-five minute lunch, lunchtime period and still give the students plenty of time to have a, a good, healthy lunch when they got home.
So just to let you know, most of the routes that are going from, uh, home to school are twenty-two to about twenty-six minutes home. Some are home within fifteen. It depends on where they are on the routes, but most of the routes are about twenty-two minutes on the average.
Thank you. So if we said twenty, twenty-two minutes out of the forty-five minute lunch break, um, that would still give them twenty minutes or so of. You know, eating time after they got home. Um, and then they could get right into their, into their synchronous learning.
Okay, um, and I also wonder, um, uh, was it, uh. Uh, an assumption of the half day model that the, uh, that the specials would be in the afternoon? And would they be synchronous for everyone? That's a question for Andrea.
Our, our specialist teachers are amazing, um, schedule masters. Um, and so they've created this rotating schedule. I know all the elementary parents know about the red days, yellow days, orange days. And so what that does is the, the intention of this model, um, specialists wanted to keep their classes synchronous. And so they, um, so the, all the specials would remain synchronous. And they wouldn't necessarily be all in the afternoon. The specialists are looking to keep their schedule the same. So, um, the students that currently have specials in the morning. When, and if they are an in person, on the two days that they are in person, they would, they would not have specials on those two days. But because of the rotating schedule, they wouldn't always miss the same schedule. It would kind of rotate and they would miss. So it would be possibly, you know, having every other, you know, cycle that they would make up the schedules. But the, the specialist teachers seemed to feel like they would be able to keep their curriculum, uh, you know. Keep fidelity to their curriculum even with that model. And they felt like it was important for when the students were in person. That they were able to be engaging in, in-person learning, um, but that the specials would remain remote. And so some students would have their remote specials. Um, in the morning or in the afternoon, whenever it was. But the other thing that our specialist teachers really felt, um, concerned about. Was the fact that if the, it was a full day model, that the students that were completely remote wouldn't get any specials. Um, at all, because then it would be, the, the specialist would be teaching the in-person students only. So that was something that we were trying to resolve as well for, for equity reasons.
So I don't know if you want me to clarify that, but the, the full day model doesn't change the specialist's schedule at all. And the remote students would receive their special every day.
Would receive it.
There would be no change in the specialist's schedule for, for remote students.
So the remote students would receive this, the, the special synchronously is what you're saying?
They would, just as they do now.
Uh huh. So, um, if a specialist is, sorry, a specials teacher is, uh, is teaching to a class in person. Does that, and, and the, and the remote students are going to be a part of that class? Does that mean that the teacher would have to teach? To the students in person and the students on the computer at the same time?
It wasn't my understanding that the specialist teacher would be teaching any of the students in person at, at this time during this hybrid model.
I see. Okay. So everybody would be participating in their specials via a computer, whether they were from a remote student or an in-person student.
Correct.
Okay.
Does that conclude your questions, member Sarah P. Cox?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, um, so member Goldman has her hand up next.
Thank you. I'm just going to dig right in. Uh, I'm going to ask, I have a couple, I have a few questions. Um, and I'm, I want to thank Andrea, um, Pajito and Principal Madden for sort of letting us. Volley these between the two of you to gain clarity, really. Like that's, that's what all of us are looking for, clearly. Um, and, uh, Superintendent Provost, I invite you to jump in at any time to add clarity or fill these questions out. Um, I am thinking of schools, in-person schooling as an opportunity for education, but also, uh, emotional and social learning. And for, uh, nutrition and mental health needs. Speaking about lunches, which is a topic, I understand, um, I understand the concerns. And so I just want to be clear that. Um, in the full, for in-person students in the hybrid model, they will receive, have the opportunity to receive hot lunches. Is that correct? Um, and is it your opinion that the hot lunches are significantly different than the cold lunches that they've been receiving? Is that correct?
That is correct. They, the kids who are, have been in school have very much been enjoying the hot lunches that they receive.
And, um, in the half day model, they would continue to receive the like full, uh, half day model. They would receive the lunches that had, that everyone's been enjoying all of this time so far. Is that right?
I think, I think they'd have to bring a bagged lunch, but I'm not this, I, I'm a terrible cook besides, but I, I'm not the food service person. But I do know that whenever students bring a ba- a lunch home, it's always a bagged lunch, which is very different from the hot lunch. But, I mean, I, I, I have nothing to do with food service and I'm very, very weak in the kitchen.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll say that's my understanding as well. It would be a bagged lunch to go home.
Um, and remote students would still receive full lunches as they do now if they, right? That there's an opportunity to get, for any student to have access to food.
So, one, one change we are considering with respect to that, when we transition to hybrid. Is to make the distribution be one day a week instead of two days a week. And we'd be providing seven days of breakfast and lunch at that time. Because our staff, whatever model we use will be working on feeding the students who are in the schools.
Okay, um. Thank you. Um, and then. One, I, I'm still just need a quick clarification on the specials. The specials in the full day model would continue to be synchronous, remote. And during remote time for both in-person students and remote students. Is that correct for the full-time, full-day model?
So I think I, I, I feel, and, and I think the other principals would agree with me, that we would want to sit down and talk with. Um, the specials, because I think it might depend on. On the subject as well. So I think an art class could have, um, you know, c- c- students could have a computer. And it could be done remotely and they could have their materials. Where a PE class might be different. The PE teacher might want to give direction. Ahead of time and then the students go outside. So I don't know, I can't promise that the whole class would be synchronous. Um, you know, I think we'd have to really respect, um, you know, the specialist teachers in terms of how best, like here's the situation. How best you feel like you can provide, um, you know, the service to these in-person students. I'm not expecting them to be doing both at the same time. It would, um, so, but it could be that. And I think that even happens now, that, that a teacher might give instruction and then say to go, go take your ball and go do this. And so I can't, they may go outside and continue the PE class. I, I, I can't promise how it's going to look. We've never done it before.
Sure, sure. I trust that the. Um, well, Andrea, do you want to speak to this a little? You've been talking with the, um, teachers that teach specials.
I, I, I know that the, the teachers, uh, have been incredibly thoughtful in their preparation. And, uh, around their curriculum and in their planning. And I know that if they need to. Um, their desire, from what I've heard from them, is to maintain their program as it has been established. Because that's been the way that they've planned out their curriculum. And so my understanding is that, um, having to switch. To a different mode where they're possibly providing synchronous, um, to students that are in the building versus to students when they're at home. Would be a shift in what they have planned and what that, what they're able to do. Um, and so therefore they would, um, I, from what I've heard from them is that they would prefer to be offering the classes. Remotely as they have been during this remote model, because that's what they've planned and prepared for. And that's what they've sent the materials home for and so on. So, um, I think that that was, I, I think a shift where they would have to then. Be thinking about students that were in person in the building and as well as at home would be challenging for them. I'm sure they would rise to the occasion, but I think it would be a big shift in what they have to plan and prepare for. The other concern about that is the consistency of wifi available in the buildings. And so if students, anytime we're talking about students streaming and having to bring their device from home. Into the building during their in-person time, um, and have that somehow be synchronous on a computer while they're in the buildings. That could potentially be a challenge with the wifi capabilities and the Chromebook capabilities, um, in the school buildings.
But you're not saying that that's the case for the half day model, because all of the specials would be after, right?
Correct.
Right. So John, uh, excuse me, Superintendent Provost, could you please speak to the wifi capacity in the buildings? And if students would need to bring their Chromebooks to school and then home?
Sure, um, I would just like to remind Andrea, um, of the discussion we had last Tuesday at Alt. Um, we had, uh, and I'm not going to say that the wifi has been, um. Has been without difficulties from the start of the year. In fact, there was a very famous difficulty at the, I want to say. About two weeks ago, when we were in the process of upgrading the bandwidth in the schools, which is actually the cause of the outage. Um, but we've basically tripled, um, the, the bandwidth that the district is using. There are some issues that are, that students experience with computers, but based on the testing that we've been able to do with our IT department. It's not based on bandwidth in the building. Um, the data that was shared by the IT department at that time. Showed that, um, about ninety-five percent of the users, um, within the building at any time are connecting without the issue. However, there are some Chromebooks that, that may be having difficulties. And Zoom nationally or internationally has had a number of issues, um, based on its capacity. They've. I'm, I may be getting this figure wrong, um, but I think their u- their daily usage has gone up about twenty-fold since the beginning of the. Um, of the outbreak of COVID. So I, I do know that there are issues that are, that are related to Zoom. Um, that are specific to the Zoom company rather than to our bandwidth within the schools. So there, there are some issues, but they're not issues that we believe are, are things that we need to remediate with respect to our bandwidth. Um, testing on the bandwidth shows that, um, there's adequate bandwidth for the students in the schools.
And would the students need to bring their computers in from home and then have them back, uh, bring them into school to use at school and then bring them home to have at home, right?
Yes, they would.
Nature of hybrid, I suspect.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, I was asking drilling in on the specials specifically because I think that that adds, like that would adjust the synchronous or asynchronous. Time, learning time. And so I was trying to figure out that piece was missing. Um, speaking of which, member Gold, I just want to thank you for putting together, i- if I am not mistaken, that website and those comparisons. Um. It's very helpful. So, um, Andrea, could, I just want to make, I want to break down, um, Ronnie's. Uh, excuse me, member Gold's website a little bit. So the in-person would be six hours of in-person learning over two days or like the A day, for example. Is that correct with their teacher? And then, um, three hours of synchronous learning over those two days. In the afternoons. And then up to one hour on Wednesdays. His thing said one hour.
It's, it's actually up to two hours.
Up to two, which means possibly fifteen minutes and possibly two hours.
No, I'm sorry. It's between one and two hours.
Okay, thank you. I think it's.
Or, or as much as two.
One to two hours on Wednesdays. Thank you for that clarification. Um, and then it would be six hours, um, and then that same student. Or is it the remote would have, with the remote students would have six hours of synchronous learning over the four days, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday? Can you clarify? One and a half hours per day?
Correct, yes.
Right, which is, oh, one and a half times four.
Mm-hmm.
Would be six hours of synchronous plus that. One to two on Wednesday. Plus the, right, plus two hours and sixty minutes of specials. Okay. And then, um, Principal Madden or, uh, Superintendent Provost, the, um. The full day model would be against the six hours in person over those two days. It would be eleven hours in person for those two days. Cause it would be five and a half plus five and a half each day, eleven hours.
Yes, that's correct.
And then it would be. Plus, on the flip side days, eleven hours of synchronous plus what on Wednesdays?
Well, I've heard that it can be up to two hours. I, I didn't realize that. I, I, it was my understanding was one hour, but it sounds as though it could be up to two.
So again, one to two hours on Wednesdays, let's go with.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so eleven hours synchronous. And then the remote teaching would also be. Eleven hours of synchronous over two days? Five and a half.
Plus, plus the Wednesday.
Plus the Wednesday.
And then I guess we'd add the specials, now that we're adding the specialist time. So we'd have to add the two additional days of specials.
Plus the, okay. And then the, what about the remote students on the full, on that model?
Oh, I'm talking about them that model. You, I thought you were just talking about the remote.
The two full days. Is that?
Plus the Wednesday, plus specials.
Two days of asynchronous?
No, it would be two full days of synchronous, two days of, of, of asynchronous plus specials. Uh, and then the hour, the Wednesday synchronous.
For the remote students.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I, I also just want to clarify about the, the synchronous time on the fully remote days. Um, when we were planning, um, the remote learning for, during this remote model. The, everyone agreed that five and a half hours of synchronous time in front of a screen wasn't good for anyone. And so I think it's unrealistic to say that our students and our students should be on synchronous. You know, learning synchronously for the full time that they are. Learning, that they would be sitting in front of a screen for five and a half hours. So, um, I don't, I don't think that the full day, uh, learning would be a full day of synchronous time in front of a computer. learning would be a full day of synchronous time in front of a computer screen. Because I know every educator is, is cringing at the thought, and I know parents do as well, at the thought of, you know, a child sitting in front of a computer for five and a half hours a day, that that's not really good for anybody. And I also want to just add into the instructional time during the full day. We have to, given the safety constraints, we have to factor in transition times in those days where the students are needing to move or, or, you know, using the bathroom, washing their hands, going to transitioning to specials and transitioning to lunch. Those, all of those transitions are going to take time out of the instruction. And what it's going to take for, you know, when our bathrooms, we're only allowed to have one student at a time in the bathroom. So if you could imagine a classroom of twenty and only one child can go in the bathroom at a time, how long is that going to take for bathrooming as well as the lunchtime transitions as well for hand washing and bathrooming, et cetera, et cetera. So I think saying that it's going to be a full five and a half hours of instruction is, is not quite realistic because there, we have to build in those transition times.
Sure, yeah. Thank you for that. I, I've spent some time, you know, watching my daughter in her kindergarten class and she definitely is not spending five and a half hours, you know, looking at the computer. There's a lot, the, I mean, we all know our teachers are amazing, the way that it just moves from one into the next and screen time instruction and then independent work and then re-engaging. And I'm confident that's what you're doing with your students at this time too. And so I'm, I'm really not concerned about the, the, the teachers' teaching. They, this is an incredibly, incredibly difficult time and they, it's just happening. And so we're trying to support the teachers to help create a schedule or, and create the safety that, that they deserve. And it's something, you know, we're looking at how it's been done and, and I think that's what a lot of the delay has been, but we're also have a lot of other forces coming up against us. So quite the dance, isn't it? Yeah. But thank you for that clarification. I do appreciate it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Member Goldman. Member Gold, I saw your hand up, but Member Bucinski also has her hand up. So are, did you have, okay, Member Bucinski?
Sure, thanks. So I just wanted to clarify that in both models, we will try to do the best for kids to be able to stay with their teachers, but they won't necessarily be able to stay with their teachers in every single situation. We can't guarantee that. Is that correct?
I would say that's a correct statement.
Okay. And so I think we just need to kind of, that's an important clarification, I think, for people. I also heard mentioned tonight of development of a district-wide remote teacher, and that sounds new to me. Can, can someone speak to that?
So we were, we were discussing that at the end of a meeting that, that we had, I don't know if it was last Thursday, I think it might have been last Thursday or last Tuesday, it might even have been a negotiating meeting. I'm not sure. There, there've been so many of them lately. So the, the idea was that if a student, let's say, for example, you have a grade where most of the students want to be in person. So much so that you're, you're, you basically need all of the teachers at that grade to be in person in order to serve their needs with social distancing in place and the reduced class size that that creates. Then one option would be to transfer the students who want to be remote to another teacher from another school that might have the opposite situation where there are a lot of students who want to be remote. And so you have a lot of remote teachers at that grade level. And so you're able to accommodate them within the remote classes that have already been created. So that was, that was that idea.
Okay. I mean, I think I heard kind of the beginning of this idea, but this seems a little more fleshed out. So, but just to follow up on that is, would that be a family's choice then or not?
Well, we've always said that to be in person or remote is a family's choice. And what we'd need to do is explain to the family what we're able to do to support them in person or what we're able to do to support them remotely. If we have a situation where the remote option necessitates a change to another teacher, I think we have an obligation to let the family know that before they make their decision.
Got it. And this would, am I right that this would only be for the full day hybrid model, not the half-day hybrid model?
The, the plan about changing to another school, I, or, you know, this remote teacher, the, when the fifth school, if you will, I think could come up under either situation. It depends when you have unbalanced situations. Like you've seen from some of the data at the elementary, there are grades where seventy or percent or more want to be in person. And there are also grade levels where seventy percent or more want to be remote. And so it's those imbalances that create the potential need to make a change.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. That's very helpful. And then my last question is, I just want to go back to Member Levy asking about the high-need students. So I, in the full day hybrid model, I understand what Andrea Gido explained about the half-day hybrid model, but in the full day hybrid model, Principal Madden or Superintendent, I'm just trying to figure out if there's a high-need student who wants to be in, you know, who is already in four days a week or wants to be in four days a week. What happens in the full day model? Like are, how could they have continuity with a teacher?
Oh, again, it, it really depends on a student's IEP and what their individual needs are. And so some students would spend time with their class on a Monday, Tuesday, and then they would spend time with their class just as they are now. So for a student who's there for four and a half or five days now, their schedule would be very much the same, although they would have peers to spend time with on two days a week. So currently they have some peers, but not, not necessarily their typical grade level peers. And so it would provide more opportunities for inclusion, but the rest of their days would remain unchanged. They would still receive the services just as they are now.
Got it. And would that be with an ESP remotely, like on a computer or?
So right now, sometimes they're, they're getting, they're zooming into their classroom with ESP support. Sometime they're receiving discrete trials, which is a special education service. We have special education services who are, that are happening in person. So there could be reading support, occupational therapy, speech therapy, there are all sorts of things are going on in the buildings currently. And so those services would remain unchanged. Those are a civil right for those students.
Right. And then in the half-day model with the high-need students who, you know, as you mentioned, it's a civil rights issue that they were required to give them full days. If they're in the school four days, then what does that do to transportation? Do we have to run two different buses home if we're providing transportation to students, one at lunchtime and one at the end of the day?
There would be two rounds of transportation from the elementary schools, just as you described, a midday for most of the students and then a second pickup at the end of the day. I see that Tammy has unmuted herself, so I think she wants to jump in on this.
No, you answered that pretty good, Dr. Provost. So yes, that would be exactly it. It would be a full day, like a regular half-day, and then we'd have to have another three tiers to pick up because we have students at the high school JFK and at the elementaries. So it'd be quite a bit extra cost and a lot more busing in the afternoon.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all.
All set, Member Bucinski. So from school committee, I have Member Gold, Dr. Provost, Member Goldman again, and Member Levy. And again, just for those who've been joining the Zoom late, we wanted to do the presentation of this alternative hybrid plan first, and then we'll be going to public comment next before any deliberation or vote. So Member Gold, did you have something to add or question?
Yes. I just wanted to speak to the, this idea of the district-wide remote position. Is my audio okay, by the way? Okay. Because I think that, you know, it, it seems logistically like it meets the numbers, but I think because we wanted to be able to say to parents that you have an opportunity to be remote every single day synchronously. But I, we have heard feedback from teachers and one, one was a kindergarten teacher, Karen Kent, from who gave me permission, all the school committee, we got an email from her and she gave us, gave permission to share some of her comments. I guess I'd like, Dr. Provost, if you could talk to like the developmental appropriateness of it. You know, something that she shared is that switching students to other teachers and new classes with different tiers is incredibly academically and emotionally disruptive and developmentally inappropriate. And I think that's a big concern that educators are having with that idea. And I guess if you could just talk to the realisticness and the, and whether the appropriateness of having that district-wide position with potentially, you know, like, do you already know what you'd be able to cap it at or student number-wise? And because I think that's, that's a big part that's hinging on the, on the answer of which plan we go to, at least for me, to understand how well can we also support remote students? So that's one question I have. If you can answer that, I have another one right after that.
So I agree completely with what Karen is saying about the difficulty of students changing teachers. That's the reason why we want to use that option only when we have an imbalance. You know, at one point we were considering, what if we just made a fifth school? That was a fully remote school and students who wanted to be remote would have to go to, to that school. And when we realized the numbers of students who would lose connection with their teachers, it became an untenable solution for us for the, the very reason that we brought out. However, when you have a class where so many students want to be in person that all of the teachers associated with that class need to be in person in order to serve them, then then you have weighing their needs and interests and desire to stay with their own teachers against the fact that there are also some students who want to be remote and someone needs to take care of them. So our goal would be to limit the number of students who want, who have to go into that sort of district-wide remote position. And that's why I'm not even really calling it district-wide. What I'm saying is you balance a class that has an overabundance of in-person learners with a class that has an overabundance of remote learners, so that the amount of changing is minimized. But it's a very serious consideration. And that's why I've said that it needs to be clear to the community that in both of these models, there are scenarios that will arise where students will need to have a different teacher. If they're making a selection to come in person or remote and their teacher that they currently have is making the opposite selection, that may cause a break.
Thank you. And then the follow-on up on that would be, I mean, does what Principal Madden was sharing, which is a really interesting one, and I get the idea of how a teacher in a, in a ESP can collaborate with a group of students across two rooms. I mean, that's definitely a possibility. Wouldn't that also then apply in the half-day model? Now, it's just, as we've been talking about it, I've been considering it in the sense that if we had the situation that Dr. Provost just shared, that you wouldn't have so many students coming in on the half-day that they could also be shared with another in-person teacher and an ESP? If that, if, let me know if you understand what I'm asking there.
Yeah, no, I do understand. I do understand. So for example, there's a class right now that we keep talking about at one school where in one of the, one of the grades, once, almost everyone in that grade wants to be in person, or in that class, everyone wants to be in person. And then there's another grade, another class in that same grade where very few want to be in person. So one option would be to divide those students on the in-person day with one of the teachers. Obviously, it would be better if it was the teacher with all the students who want to be in person, because that would allow them all to maintain contact. That's the one piece we don't know right now, right? It could end up being the opposite. It could be that teacher with all the students who want to be in person is not able to come in person. In which case those students would be transferred over to the other teacher in one, in one solution to the problem.
One, one other thing I wanted to bring up, we were, have been talking about the teacher and the ESP, but all of our grade levels in the elementary schools also are blessed with fabulous special education teachers. And so that's, that's another adult and another professional position in that mix in terms of how, how we're going to best serve and teach all of the, the children in that class.
Thank you, Principal Madden. So remaining from school committee, Dr. Provost, your hand was up. I don't know if that was just in responding to something or?
No, I was actually wanting to get back to Member Levy on her question about the cafeteria at Leeds Elementary. So the, the issue with the cafeteria at Leeds Elementary is that, much like the gymnasium at Leeds Elementary, the air handlers are on the ceiling. And so I don't know if you saw the video from Dr. Allen, but he was actually showing the, the demonstration of the, the preferred technique for measuring air exchanges, which requires someone to be on the outside of the air handler and someone on the inside of the air handler measuring the difference in the air going in and coming out. And so in those two spaces, the commissioning agent was not able to perform that operation because they don't have lifts to get up to the, to the air handler there. So, and actually, knowing that was the case and, and because that, that's the situation, we are using the, the cafeteria at Leeds right now for storage, because in all of these rooms, about half of the stuff needs to go somewhere. And there isn't a lot of storage space in the school. So using the cafeteria would not be a very effective means at Leeds. Another option, potential option could be using some of the other larger spaces. There's library, there's gym. Again, like I said, the gym wasn't measured for the same reason because the commissioning agent didn't have lifts to get to the ceiling to look at those air handlers. But we know now that we can mitigate those spaces with the use of HEPA filtration. So we could do that. And, you know, that does go back to Dr. Allen's recommendation. You know, this, this whole thing started with his recommendations about lunch. He actually, you know, had developed the recommendation to have lunch in the classrooms rather than the cafeterias in order to try to distribute the eaters, the number of eaters as widely as possible instead of having them in a single space. But another thing he talks about doing is making use of non-traditional spaces. So that, that could be an option in addition to eating outside, which is another one of his recommendations, although the window for that is getting a little bit short as the cold weather comes on. You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Provost. Member Goldman, you have your hand up.
Thank you. I just wanted to confirm, Superintendent Provost, that with either the full day model or the half-day model, that we'll have the same rollout of start dates for the grades and schools?
We will unless you describe, direct me otherwise.
Okay. And for either model, the families will be making the same commitment? I just wanted to talk a little bit about, once we make a vote, like what the next steps are and if they're different for the two miles or if they're the same.
So the next step would be the same. The, the the direction that I had gotten from the school committee, I want to say about a month ago, maybe it was less than that, was that after we had done an initial registration, we'd reach back out to families and tell them what in-person and remote was going to look like and give them an option to change. So whether it's a full-day model or whether it's a half-day model, there will be differences and there will be more details to share with families. So we will do that. Our, we do have a, we do have a, a process set up, which I, I will be test, testing over the course of the next few days. Our, our hope is to be able to send an email to families because we did collect their emails when they registered the students to say, this was your choice, here are what the details look like. Do you want to stay the same or do you want to change to the opposite choice? And hopefully that process will be able to be automated so that we can reduce the burden on office staff to get second selections from each of the families. But once that selection is made, then we need to stick with it. I had said that initially we would need families to stay with their choice until the new year. I still believe that's the case, and it's even more so the case now that everything is pushed back a couple of weeks. Because as you all know, from all of these discussions, there's so many logistics involved with every aspect of this that we need to be able to build a plan with the. build a plan with the folks who had initially selected it and get it, get it strong, get it running with as seamlessly as possible before we can entertain the possibility of adding more people to the model.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Okay, so I believe that concludes all the questions from school committee members about the presentation of this potential revision to the hybrid model that had been initially adopted by the school committee. So what I want to do now is to move into the public comment period that traditionally happens at the beginning of our meeting, but we wanted to have it following this presentation, just so the public would have more information about what they were offering comment on. We did ask for folks to, if they wanted to sign up in advance, they could. We had two people who signed up. And then I'll be going through all of the hands, the, using the hand raise function on Zoom. If you're, if you're on a computer, if you are not on a computer but want to raise your hand, you can use the star functions on your phone. Star six, I believe, will let you raise your hand on Zoom. So I'll go through the hands in order. One of those pre-registriants for public comment was Principal Madden, who maybe didn't know she was going to be called into service as one of the presenters.
Oh, no, I didn't. But that's fine. I do want to read a couple of things if that's okay.
Okay, fine. So I will, and just remind folks if, when I do call on you in public comment, if you could just identify yourself and where you live. And I will have a timer for three minutes, just so that everyone has an equal amount of time. You don't have to use the full three minutes, but I'm going to try to cut you off when you get to three minutes and have, ask you to please finish up. So Principal Madden, I'll turn to you.
So thank you. I'm Sarah Madden, Principal at Ryan Road Elementary School. Thank you to everyone here who has interest in our educational planning moving ahead in these really difficult times. Having children remote or in-person in these circumstances is and should be a decision up to caregivers, and I'm glad that we have received information from that group to help us in our planning. I understand that any increase to in-person teaching services brings anxiety and uncertainty for teachers and staff. It is a really scary time. However, I have seen our amazing teachers and staff rally to do phenomenal things all during this pandemic. They impressed me every day with their patience, their persistence, and creative approaches to engaging students, and I have no doubt that they will show continued excellence as we move into a hybrid model. There are no great options, but we should come up with a plan that maximizes our resources in order to provide the best education to our students while keeping safety and consistency at the forefront. It is hard for me to support the half-day plan because of the differences in how much time students are supported by teachers. In the full-day hybrid model, remote students would receive 12 hours per week of teaching time, and the in-person students would receive 23. In the half-day hybrid model, remote students would receive seven, and in-person students would receive 10. The difference in teacher support for all students for me is the resounding reason to accept the full-day model. I think the half-day model is easier, but I believe we have an educational obligation to look beyond what is the easier model and to look at which model best supports our students, especially those most vulnerable and those who are struggling in the remote model. I'm sure that no matter what model is voted upon by the school committee, that our elementary schools will do the best they can to figure out the logistics and, and to do what's best to meet the needs of our students. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Principal Madden. The other person who signed up in advance for public comment was Elizabeth Bowen. Elizabeth, are you on the call?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, so I'll start the timer. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Bowen. I live in Florence. My son is in first grade at Leeds. He loves school. His teacher is wonderful. She knows I think she's wonderful. You know, it's not wonderful. Feeling compelled to compromise the privacy of my young child at a public meeting. But here we are. My son can read fluently and work independently. If you were to observe his class Zoom, he would seem to be thriving, or at least comfortably surviving in remote learning. But after six years without a significant temper tantrum, he now has inconsolable tantrums multiple times a week, sometimes multiple times a day. This is a completely untenable situation for my family. My husband, who does the bulk of our daytime childcare, is already struggling to keep up with his work. Until the recent decision to move hybrid, I was seriously considering taking a leave of absence from work, something we can't really afford. And then you said that we were going hybrid. You said that on November 16th, my baby would get some relief. So there is my story. There's my child's private business. And since I work at my child's school, I've also just shared my family's private business with my entire workplace. But I'm not the only one. At the playground, at the grocery store, I hear the stories of struggling children. And there are more representative than the toxic echo chamber of Facebook threads where people congratulate themselves for having children who aren't struggling in remote learning. Throughout this entire process, we have been expected to have empathy and to sacrifice for people who want to stay remote, but no reciprocal empathy has been offered. It's much harder for families who are facing mental health crises and educational challenges to have the vulnerability to open up in these public meetings, since sharing these struggles carries a significant stigma. Stigma. Saying my child isn't learning to read, or I'm terrified about how much this is impacting my baby's mental health, is much different to saying someone in my house has a compromised immune system. We don't get to be vague and expect sympathy or even respect without airing our family's very specific pains. I am begging you to have some empathy for my family, because I have spent months offering empathy for yours. I am begging you to follow through and begin the already agreed upon hybrid model on November 16th. And if you can't find it in your heart to consider the needs of anyone except your own families, then maybe being on the school committee is more than you can handle. People would have empathy for you. After all, it's a global pandemic. Children are being damaged by your refusal to listen to public health experts and follow through. You might say, I understand, but actions speak louder than words. October 8th was the date we were supposed to decide on a hybrid model. And here we are, a month later, dragging your feet. You're not acting in good faith, and you're not acting for the good of the community. You need to make a decision and stick to it.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. Okay, so I'll now move to the participant list in Zoom, and we'll go through those in the order in which people's hands are raised. The first person in that list is Ellen Brown. Ellen, if you could unmute yourself and, and go ahead and just let us know your name, confirm your name and where you're from.
Sure. I'm Ellen Brown, and I live in Whately, Massachusetts. I'm also a first grade teacher at the Jackson Street School. So I wanted to talk about the need for teacher voice and for parents getting full and accurate information during this process of moving to a hybrid model. But the prior discussion changed my course. So I just want to say that I'm a bit disappointed in how the full day option was represented. One principal talking about very specific building related issues seems vague, and one principal talking does not represent all of the staff and teachers and families and students at the other buildings. So I have more questions than answers now. And I'd like just to put these questions out there and hope that the school committee can discuss them in their meeting after public comment. I wanted to know how many different teacher, or excuse me, how many different instructors a student could have per day in the full day option? And if there are ESPs in the mix, how many of them are certified to be teachers? I would like to also say that the half-day hybrid model was born out of teacher concern about children eating lunch in the classrooms in the buildings. And hearing that principals are feeling confident about working that out does nothing for teacher confidence around our safety and our students' safety. And I'd like to also mention that a bag lunch is a lunch. And during a pandemic, I think we should be happy that children are getting food. And the hours on learning discussion should also involve, involve and include the hours for teacher preparation for any model that's been, that will be put forward. Thank you, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Ellen. The next person whose hand is raised is Mary Beth Stratton. Mary Beth, if you could unmute.
Actually, I'm going to speak. I'm Justin Stratton, Mary Beth's husband.
Perfect.
We live on Damon Road. I'm also an educator in a different school district. What I care most about is equity, because we have to keep our son home as a necessity, not a choice. It's not a choice, because it could kill someone in my family if he gets, brings it home. And so that's not a choice. The half-day model is more equitable and cares more about students like my son, who have to opt out and be at home. Not as a choice, but as a necessity. The half, the half-day also is thinking about all the students, not just the in-person ones, but the in-person ones will get that opportunity to be in the school. I like the fact that it's backed by the teachers. We need to approve either model and implement it as soon as possible. I'm worried about my lunches too, because I don't know how anyone expects a kindergartner to eat and not talk. If you think that's possible, you do not have a kindergartner or never met one. I also worry about teaching phonics when a child is wearing a mask. How do you know how they're pronouncing words? If you can't see their mouth? That's all I have to say. Obviously, I'm very passionate about it. I care about the teachers. I care about the students. And we need to care about everybody, just not one group. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stratton. The next person whose hand is raised is Kiran Slattery. Kiran, go ahead and lower your hand.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. My name is Kiran Slattery. I'm a fifth grade teacher at Jackson Street School, and I live in Northampton. And Stratton family, I'm, I thank you so much for your comments. I feel humbled to speak after you. I feel frustrated that the majority of you, school committee, voted for a hybrid model without a fully thought-out plan for how to serve all of our students. When you voted, few of you had considered all members of our community. To echo a letter that many union members and I sent to you, the pandemic has revealed many of the inequities inherent in public education. Excuse me. As we move forward, we hope that any models we offer to our students do not exacerbate these. Please vote for a half-day plan. It has many benefits, including that half-days minimize time that educators have to spend enforcing transition periods, appropriate mask wearing, safe bathroom visits, and social distancing rules. It also allows for a more focused quality period of learning. Instead of stretching an in-person day for all students across six and a half hours in masks, in stark sterile environments, compressing the day would allow for more robust academically rigorous learning for in-person students. And Dr. Provost, I know that that speaks your language. While also, as long as numbers would allow, would allow for remote or asynchronous students to meet with their teachers in the afternoon, to establish continuity and allow for academic and socio-emotional support as we currently are able to provide under the remote model. It would also potentially privilege high-needs students if you voted on a half-day model in which teachers could teach their own class in all four mornings. Because as Andrea pointed out earlier, that way high-needs students could potentially be in school four mornings per week with their current teacher. Obviously, most ideal would be either of the half-day plans that provide an equitable amount of direct synchronous small group instruction for the A, the B, and the remote-only groups, so that students can not only remain with their original teacher, but also be together. Unfortunately, though, the hybrid model that the majority of you voted for will likely force classes to be broken up because of situations where teachers need to self-certify for personal reasons, or if a lot of caregivers keep their students fully remote, for which I cannot blame them. Half-day schedules also eliminate unsafe lunch periods, as students would eat at home. And again, I have to echo the Strattons here. Have any of you actually ever stepped foot in a school during an elementary lunchtime? Are you really asking us to ask a group of children to not talk while eating their lunch, especially after spending all morning listening and learning? As Andrea mentioned earlier, it's one thing to spend five minutes to go outside and eat a quick mid-morning snack. That's totally doable. It's quite another to demand that our students sit in their already stark sterile classrooms, eating separately and silently. What exactly is our end goal here? Thank you for your consideration, and please vote for the half-day model.
Thank you very much. The next person who is signed up to speak is Sahara Pensavy.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for your time. I live at Ryan Road here in Florence. I just want to say that I feel duped. I feel like we spent so much time talking about and deciding that we were going to go with this plan, that by the way, to the best of my knowledge, was already approved and submitted, as we were told in, from the beginning. So we thought, hey, this is just going to happen now. Great. But now it's like, we feel, at least I feel, that we're going back on what we said. It was like, well, now we're going to put in a few other little things, and maybe we'll change this, and we're going to take that away from you again. And people talking about it being fair, it's, it's not going to be fair no matter what we do. Every family has a struggle. I'm immune compromised. My mom's immune compromised. I'm going to send my kids to school when the school opens up for my child to go there, and that's a risk I'm willing to take for her mental health, because she's six years old and she can't read, and she is severely struggling. And the only options that even the mental health people have for her is a Zoom meeting, which is not going to help her. You were talking about kids not being able to talk while they eat lunch. Can I break it down for you? One sneeze from one of those unmasked children, whether they're eating or not talking at all, is going to spread it all around the room, people. So it doesn't matter if they're talking or not. That's not a fact. Daycares do this every single day, and it is the exact same scenario. They are separated. These small children, my four-year-old wears a mask eight hours a day. They have mask breaks, they go outside, they have their lunch in the same area. They're not allowed to share toys, and they understand this. You're underestimating what these children will do so that they can be back at school and actually get to see their friends, actually get to see the teachers. It's not what a parent thinks is going to happen. I know this because I see this. The happiness that a four-year-old has because she gets to be around people all day in her school, and my six-year-old biting herself because she can't stand remote learning. And I just also want to say that the teachers and Mrs. Madden at Ryan Road Elementary School are absolutely wonderful. It is not their fault that this doesn't work, but there are just some kids that this is not good for and that they just can't learn. It is not the teacher's fault, and I don't blame them. But my child needs to be in school with a teacher at least two days a week, not this four half-days, because also, you should know, I've been watching, and my child only gets about four hours a day with the remote, which is supposed to be an all-day thing. If you count all the times between break and lunch, she's not getting five and a half hours regardless, as it is now on her remote. So she will get more of a better education being two days full-time than she will on this half-day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person whose hand is raised is Mike Stein. Mike, if you can, go ahead and unmute.
Thank you. Mike Stein, live on Columbus Ave in Northampton. It's interesting to consider how we got here tonight. At the last school committee meeting, eight out of 10 members voted to proceed with the hybrid plan that left remote learners with asynchronous learning with little to no support in it. And in the face of public backlash, now have buyer's remorse. These votes were cast with full awareness of the trade-off that giving half the These votes were cast with full awareness of the trade-off that giving half the kids two days of in-person learning was considered so beneficial. That had justified leaving up the half the students out in the cold. The vote was taken before a survey was conducted of caregivers. Principals were sent out to face the masses with no answers, and it was a communication disaster. Unsurprisingly, many parents were upset when they learned the implications of the decision, and due to that uproar, we're back here tonight. All of this was foreseeable and avoidable. Tonight, you're voting on amending the previous hybrid plan based on two options only communicated to caregivers on Friday. Why aren't we having a town hall to understand what is being changed, why, and what the impacts are? Instead, we are getting a truncated presentation on the fly as part of the meeting to vote, where caregivers can ask no questions. With whatever emerges tonight, it would behoove the district to really think about its communication strategy and rolling this out. To say it's been a cluster is an understatement. If you want this to be successful, clearly communicating with caregivers should be a top priority. Even describing one of the two models tonight as the NACE plan is divisive and entirely cuts against all the effort of communicating that this is a partnership. It's worth mentioning that the school committee is not meeting in person. And yet they are asking our students and teachers to return to their buildings. The town offices are closed, and yet we are pushing to open schools to more students. Interestingly, the CDC guidance for office buildings is to meet ASHRAE standards, and yet that is not the requirement for schools. An engineer was hired to assess the district's air quality in light of those standards, and the public has no idea of the outcome. I fear that the district is chairpicking the air quality metrics and using the Cambridge consultants' figures, not ASHRAE standards, in order to claim the ventilation safe. If that is what's happening, they should say so, and we should hear an argument about why this is a good idea. The Trump administration's CDC guidelines, as well as the Mass State guidelines. Allow them to apply a lesser standard for schools than they would be urged to follow for City Hall. This should cause us concern. I'm in favor of the half-day plan because it doesn't require teachers to be in their classrooms with unmasked students. Assuming that young children will be able to eat without talking to one another seems ridiculous and showcases some of the dystopian elements. Of socially distanced in-person education that the hybrid plan has in mind. Moving to a hybrid model, either of those being discussed will take a tremendous amount of resources and impose heavy burdens on the district and community for little to no gain. Ramp this up in light of the COVID-19 trajectory in mass and nationwide makes little sense regardless of color-coded maps or pressure from DESI. If we are honest, this is really about childcare, and that's not something that we should be driving our decision. Instead, we should be trying to return as many high-risk students on waitlists to in-person learning as possible and continuing to build on our existing remote school. While I'm happy that-
Your tie, so if you could just finish up, Mr. Stein. Thanks.
While I'm happy that pressure to give remote students resources was effective, I still can't see the logic in doing any of this. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, okay, the next person who signed up is David Velez.
Hello. Good evening, everybody. Just want to read this. So first, thanks to everyone on this call and all the committee members for taking on this very challenging issue, and really do appreciate everyone's work. Uh, in regards to the issue of eating in the school, I would really like to hear the opinion of the school nurses and the school health district expert. Do they also concur that students need to eat silently with the teacher standing in the doorway? I'd like to know if this is the practice at other schools that are doing the hybrid model. Uh, how does Deerfield or Hadley or Greenfield handle eating in schools? Also, going back to member Levy's comment, have options such as tents been explored? And is the only thing preventing us from using tents funding? And if so, could PTOs help in that? Uh, and then also, what about students just eating on the playground? We know recess goes on even during cold months and all but the most inclement of weather, and I know kids have no problem eating while playing. As from what I'm seeing comparing these plans, the difference in the number of hours with teachers is significant. Uh, I mean, they hardly compare. I'm hoping this hybrid model is a step moving towards normal, towards a day when we can go back to five days a week. And I understand that there are challenges and logistics to be faced, but I'm hoping that this is an appreciable step forward, not just an incremental step. Speaking for my family, I hope that this committee will vote for the full-day hybrid. Our daughter needs, and I would say deserves, school, in-person school with as much face-to-face teacher time as possible. She, like so many of her peers, are doing their best to endure Zoom, and they're they're trying their hardest, and they really are. And so are the teachers, but this is a barely functional substitute. I hear from other parents, and I'm sure you must know this, there are many students that are showing up for check-in and then completely turning tuning out, closing the laptops. Um, I know I've seen how the Zoom classroom functions. It's not fair to the teachers, and it's not fair to the students. My daughter's one's in a preschool, the other goes to daycare when she's not doing Zoom school. They they learn, they eat, and they are safe, as are their peers. I hope this committee will be guided by facts and science. Please learn from the best practices of other schools in the state and our region. I know other schools are doing this safely. We can do the same, and we need to do the same. School committee members, please follow through on your previous vote, your commitment to this community, and implement the full-day hybrid plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Velez. The next person whose hand is raised is Christopher Golden.
Hi there. Uh, I wanted to thank the committee for giving me the opportunity to speak, and definitely there have been a lot of really incisive comments and some, you know, some real emotional testimony. And I saw, I'll keep this short. Um, I just wanted to add a couple of things. I'm a parent of two children at Jackson Street School, a kindergartner and a third grader. You know, I recognize a lot of people are really struggling with remote learning. I'm concerned that cases are rising so dramatically. Uh, in Hampshire County, I think we're at, I think our seven-day average for new cases is now up to. Somewhere around where we were in April, except it's trending the wrong direction. It's going up. Uh, so I don't think we fully understand what we're going to be facing soon. Given all that, I I do wish regretfully we could delay the implementation of the hybrid model. However, my understanding is that that's not an option tonight for the committee. And I do recognize that the committee is under some pressure from the state as well to resume in-person instruction. So. You know, given all that, to assess the proposed revisions, I'm concerned that despite the best of intentions. Neither of them will sufficiently mitigate the potentially lethal risk to our educators that come with in-person instruction. We just don't know what that risk is, and that little risk just doesn't seem to be part of the job description from what I can tell. Um, I mean, I'm not a teacher. I'm a parent, but that, but at this moment, I'm glad I'm not. You know, with that in mind, I would ask that the committee amends whatever model is adopted, whatever hybrid uh model is adopted. To ensure that educators be given the option to opt out of in-person teaching if they so choose with no negative repercussions for their careers in the Northampton School District. I'm not sure, perhaps that's already a part of it, but I haven't heard anything about that, and I worry about people being forced to go back because they're afraid of losing their jobs. And that's for me. Thanks. Thanks again for your time.
Thank you, Christopher. The um, the next person who is has their hand raised is Quaverly Rothenberg.
Hi, guys. Everybody able to hear me? Mayor Narcoits?
Yes, we can. Yes, we can.
Honored to come after that statement. That was very moving because. That was just straight empathy for teachers and wasn't even really a statement about. The two potential plans that are being talked about today. It was an important. Addendum to it all. That was a really moving statement. Thank you, Chris. So like Chris, I also hear a lot of emotion tonight, and I think I just want to urge the committee members to remember. That you can't bring. Emotions into your decision. You need to be. Looking at. You need to be looking at things objectively, without sympathy, without favor. Without personal bias and prejudice, which is very difficult to do. And so if we look at this, if we look at everyone's situations, some on this end of the spectrum and some on the other. You know, logically, it seems I would suggest that the half-day is what what gets you there. And so I appreciate you. Thinking about this and. Is it member Gold? Ronnie? I appreciate the thought that you put into this, too. Uh, let me just check my notes and see if there's anything else I want to leave you guys with. I was struck by Principal Madden's statement at the opening of the public comments. She said that she was concerned about the loss of instruction. And so she wanted the full day. She said it was because she was worried about all of our students, but really, she's only able to save those who come in person. By her urging that we save everyone by going with the full day, that 24 hours and 12 hours. Difference there, the disparity, really sets you up for some serious liability down the road, I think. I think you have to be thinking about equitability. Making sure that if a parent brings you to court or a class of parents brings you to court on the grounds of needing reasonable accommodations or. Discrimination, you need to be able to say to the judge very clearly, we treated everybody the same. We gave everybody the most equal opportunities that we could. So I urge you to think about that, and I thank you all so much for your time, and Dr. Provost, Principal Chuket, and Mayor Narcoits, thank you all for engaging with me on email the past week. Take good care. Good luck. Stay safe.
Thank you very much for your comments. The next person who is signed up to speak this evening is Anthony Peck.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks to the school committee. Um, I live on Laurel Street, Northampton. And and just echo what other people said, this is a very difficult choice and wanted to um. To say thanks to the school committee for all the time and hours you're putting into this, as well as staff and all the teachers that are involved in this. So it's heart-wrenching to hear some of these stories. Um, I just wanted to highlight some issues, and I maybe, and maybe that can inform your discussions and deliberations going forward. The first has to do with instructional time. As a researcher, um, I teach at UMass. I've been looking at some of the research in this area, and people don't know at this point what effects of of less instructional time. Is on on learning loss during the COVID era, but it is something that people are looking into. In other words, we have reasonable expectations or people make hypotheses that that instructional time or the decrease in non-instructional time. Will result in some significant learning loss. As second, however, is is the issue relating to the equality equality in instructional time, and I want to just. I just hope you can figure out a way to to get that equalized in some way, as it seems like there's some disparities between. The in-person learning versus the remote learning. And then third, I really wanted to emphasize that, you know, focusing on the best, safest practices is really crucial here for protecting. The staff, the faculty, the teachers, and the students. And lastly, I want to encourage the school committee to maybe try to be creative a little bit, which is to evaluate the potential trade-offs that are that are occurring here. So the thing I'm seeing, or at least based on what I've heard in this conversation, is there's a there's basically a constraint that's being imposed on this whole decision-making process, which is keeping students with their current teachers. By by starting with that assumption, it's it's probably creating some of these some of these difficulties in instructional time situations. And if you were loose, if you loosen that up a bit more, that my my thinking, and again, I'm not an expert in this, is that it made make. One, increase instructional time and at the same time equalize instructional time. And I'm I'm not, and I I do study kids and students, and I don't, I'm not that familiar with. How disruptive switching teachers is to students, but to me, instructional time is more important for students at this point. We're in a pandemic, getting students with instructional time remotely in person is going to be the key here. Switching to new teachers, you know, I, I don't know, that doesn't seem as important. I thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, the next person whose hand is raised is Kate Kelly.
Good evening, and thank you every single person in every single role for your time tonight. My name is Kate Kelly, and I live at 22 Maple Street. I'm currently the school nurse at Leeds Elementary. I'm speaking tonight as a high respiratory risk person myself and as the mother of a second grader at Leeds. As respectfully as possible, I implore you to please vote to stick with the hybrid plan. That's what your provost and his team worked hard to prepare, and you voted on already. Adding another to the plan to the mix in this 11th hour is further dividing caregivers and educators in our community. I believe in fact that this additional plan pits those of us whose children's mental, social, and emotional health or academic learning are literally falling apart due to screen time. Against those who need to choose remote-only learning for their own family's needs. The half-day plan is a logistical nightmare for caregivers. A current highlight of my second grader's week is a single half-hour visit for services where he once. Even got to have an in-person conversation with his awesome second-grade teacher. If student, if he could have two whole days at school, he and I assure you many other students would really benefit. Public health, science, and mitigation strategies support having more children in the building at this time. Public health metrics for opening school in any format have been taken very seriously in Northampton. Many, many families have indicated preference for in-person time. We know that Northampton has gone above and beyond with their air handling and other safety measures. We now know, as we did in the summer, that masking, hand washing, and distancing work. The current hybrid model addresses all of this. And the first model, as I understand it, would allow teachers to stay with their students a little bit more than the other one. I haven't figured out what the benefit really is for the remote learners with the second plan. Children have been eating and using the bathrooms in public schools right here in Northampton without COVID spreading because they're expected to stay in one place and not face each other. Other districts have been doing this since the summer. Children are flexible, resilient, and are better than one might think, keeping their masks on. This includes preschoolers who are already in our buildings for full days, five days a week, at both public schools here and at our daycares and childcare centers across the Commonwealth. In closing, a quote from Dr. Joseph Allen, who praised our school system's air handling and public health measures. He says, "We've failed schoolchildren by letting community transmission remain so high that people are hesitant to reopen schools fully." Even then, he says, "There are many communities that could bring kids back to school that aren't doing so. With potentially devastating consequences to learning, socialization, nutrition, and other aspects of growing up fostered by the school environment." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, the next person whose hand is raised is Annie Salsich. Annie, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'm a parent to a third grader at Bridge Street, and this will be short. It's mainly a question that I am hoping the committee can can get to later. Um, but I first want to say thank you that for you coming back and trying to find something that will work. For as many people as possible. I know that's not an easy decision, and I I appreciate what you're trying to do here and how hard it is. And thank you to everyone, but especially to teachers, and I just, I want to hold that. Really, really strong right now. Like, I have been blown away by my son's teacher, by the creativity. And by what I'm hearing about teachers across the district, and they. Got together to put together a plan through the union. By listening to teachers, by collectively brainstorming about what makes sense, not for their own protection only, but because they love these kids, and they're trying to figure out a way. To do this safely and thoughtfully for the education, and I. I worry that that's getting lost here, right? That. We're asking teachers to do the hard work. They're the ones doing this every day, and they they. Spoke eloquently and beautifully and heartfelt at the last meeting. And the vote didn't go the way that many of them were talking about, but they got back to the table. And they're figuring out how to creatively do it, and I so I just implore us as a district, not even just as a school committee. But as a district, to listen to teachers right now, who are speaking very plainly and clearly and with heart. Not in a combative way, but in what seems to me a very collaborative way where they're trying to find solutions, so. Please, let's do that, and not, let's not leave tonight. Again, with a situation in which teachers were were dismissed and not listened to as much as they should be. But my question is is just if you all can answer this later or- But my question is, is just if you all can answer this later or when a survey goes out to parents is as much clarity as can be given at some point when a decision is made about this, the district-wide positions. If there's a way when you ask parents if they want to do that remote option or hybrid or remote and stay with their class, if as much detail as you can give, like will there be a cap? You know, that there, that teacher wouldn't have more than 30 students or whatever the number would be, just so that we can make as informed of a decision as possible. And I, I know that's tricky, right? It's like the chicken egg, you gotta figure out answers first before you can have all the details. But as, as much information as possible so that when we're answering, we can, we can do it in an informed manner. Thank you again to all of you, appreciate what you're doing and let's please listen to the teachers right now.
Thank you very much. The next person whose hand is raised is Jen Lucine. Jen?
Hey, everyone. Thanks for being here again. And I've spoken at the last couple of meetings just about my area of expertise, which is really childhood education. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Jackson Street. Um, I also am a parent of a kindergartner, not in the district, in East Hampton where I live. And I just wanted to, you know, again, I can only speak from what I know and that is myself as a early childhood professional. I am putting my trust in the medical professionals and the public health professionals and the air handling professionals that are making decisions that are telling me that my building is safe, my classroom is safe, even though it hasn't been safe yet, but it will become safe somehow. So I, I'm willing to put that trust in those professionals. And I'm asking you to put your trust in teachers in our areas of expertise and our areas of profession. And the teachers, um, the teachers have created a plan. A lot of teachers collaborated in creating a plan that we think will help support all learners, that will provide an equitable, more equitable learning experience than what was presented last, at the last meeting. I understand, I hear the rub, I hear that, you know, people expected something to happen and something unexpected happened with this, and I just want to appreciate this school committee for being creative and being thoughtful about this, especially since the decision was made at one o'clock in the morning and the hours leading up to one o'clock in the morning where you discussing these very things, including a half-day model. I would like to say that the loss of a student-teacher and student-teacher connection is, that's a big loss. It's not just a little thing. And as a teacher, as a professional, I can speak to that. And what I can tell you that is that teacher, our teacher connection, it's what allows students to learn. And loss of a teacher is loss of learning. And if we're going in the direction that unfortunately it looks like this virus is going and we're heading toward another shutdown, to lose a teacher only to then shut down and have to go remote again, it just seems silly to keep reinventing the wheel every time this virus throws another one at us. I have so much empathy for the families that are struggling and for the kids who have, who are really having a hard time emotionally with this. And I think the hybrid model can address some of those emotional concerns in a way that's developmentally appropriate for kids and fair and equitable to students who can't, just can't be in our buildings because of their own health and safety. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person who is signed up is, or has their hand up rather, is Nathan Zajak. Nathan, if you want to go ahead and unmute yourself and
All right, thank you.
Let us know where you're from.
I live on Spring Street. I've got two children at, or would be at Leeds. I think it's important to listen to the people that have to actually implement the plan. And the school committee needs to vote for the entire city. They cannot just pick one group of children and cater to them and not cater to the other children. The half-day plan at this point is best suited to fit everyone's needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zajak. The next person whose hand is raised is Karen Foster. Karen, you can go ahead and unmute and just let people know where you live.
Hi, thank you, I'm Karen Foster. I'm a resident of Northampton. I do want to just recognize and thank the incredible number of hours of work that all of you have put into this. I have a family with high-risk family members that will need to keep my child who's at Bridge Street remote. And after the last meeting, I was pretty profoundly disappointed to see that a plan was on the table that wouldn't be able to really serve remote students. And I am very grateful to you for coming back at another meeting with a plan that will better meet the needs of more students. You know, I, I can't speak for older kids, but I know that the elementary level, that synchronous instruction, the engagement with the teacher, the time with their classroom, that provides the sense of school. My child would not be able to watch videos or do asynchronous work later and still be able to access the school's curriculum. So I, I really, really appreciate that that has come back. And I also understand that there's a resource issue and, you know, it would be hard for him to change teachers, but we can't have it all. And in order for my student to have quality of instruction, I think that that is something, you know, that, that would need to happen. You know, I recognize changing teachers in order to still have quality remote education is, is a choice that may well need to be made. I also, just as, as looking at these models and hearing from the teachers and hearing that a half-day model was proposed by NACE, as, as someone who is married to an educator who's having these decisions in their own district. You know, I, I really implore you to center the expertise and the professional knowledge of the teachers in your decision-making. They are the ones that will be implementing any plan that is voted on. And, um, you know, I'm seeing teachers work just so incredibly hard to do the very best they can, and I am incredibly grateful for all they're doing. And I really, really hope that their expertise is a very, very important part of any plan that is implemented. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you so much, Karen. The next person whose hand is raised is Sarah Mishad. Michelle, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Narcoitz. I live in Southampton, but I've been a teacher in Northampton for 30 years. I'm the department chair for the performing arts K through eight for the district. And I raised my hand because there were so many questions about how specials would work with the hybrid versus remote. And going forward, we've spent many hours trying to figure this out as a team of elementary specialists. When schools in regular session, the art and music teachers service two, and sometimes in some cases, three schools, seeing over 600 children a week. And the PE department sees an entire school twice a week. So you can imagine what creating the color schedule was like for us when Wednesday became not part of our regular schedule. In the hybrid model that we currently have in place, what if we moved to the half-day schedule, what would happen would be, uh, we would continue to rotate through the colors, but students would see us on their day when they were home. So if your child is in a cohort A and they're in school on Monday, Tuesday, they would have their specials on Thursday, Friday and vice versa. So that, that breaks up their day when they're at home, they have some in-time and teacher contact time and synchronous learning. The integrity of the curriculum can be kept into place. If we had to stream into the classroom in the first model where all the children in school at once, children would be taking PE in their little space behind their desk, which as the PE teacher spoke to me today, said would essentially be a movement break. Their curriculum would not be, be able to be implemented. And children cannot sing in school. Right now, the children that are in school with their masks on are humming, while my children who are at home are singing and developing their singing skills and range of singing. Supplies would have to be passed out by the ESPs. We're at home, we've sent home home kits. And so to my understanding, the difference between the two schedules was added, one of the reasons it was added the way it was was so that kids could have their specials and have continuity to see us on their remote days. So one 40-minute chunk of that time that they're at home makes for the teachers prep time. So they won't necessarily have their special in the afternoon. There's no way I can see 30 classes in those two afternoons twice a week. So hopefully that clarifies that. The difference would be the one hour that the teacher is spending, therefore, between the half-day and the in-person full day, they're only getting one hour with the remote kids. And that is the difference in the schedule. All the other time is lunch, recess, transitioning, bathrooms, washing hands. So for all of the adding of numbers, the only difference in the educational models is that one hour of remote time the teacher is spending and the kids are at home doing that remote time. So there really is no difference in the hours. The half-day model allowed us to have continuity. If we move from the hybrid to remote back, should they be, it will allow us to continue our curriculum. And our poor ESPs that would be stretched between two classrooms because the teacher's on a classroom prep break, now they have to try to get all those kids on their Zoom devices and log them all into their specials. I think we're asking a lot of our ESPs. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thanks so much for your comments. The next person whose hand is raised is Jenny Adams. Jenny, you can go ahead and unmute and just let us know where you're from.
I'll do you one up. I'll actually do a video too. Thank you, Mayor Narcoitz. I'm Jenny Adams. I have two grade school kids, one at JFK and one at Bridge Street. And I want to thank again everybody for being here. I'd also like to say hi to an MTA member, although not a NACE member. And I wanted to say, I really am glad we're doing some hybrid model. And I do not have anxiety. I think there's an assumption that parents have anxiety about in-person. I think the, like 70% of parents who've chosen hybrid are not actually particularly anxious. We've looked at Ireland, England and New Zealand, who've all kept schools open while disease rates have gone down. They've kept schools open even as disease rates have gone up and they have somehow managed to make it safe. And I want to go back to a comment that David mentioned earlier on that we need to keep our eye on, when will we go to full school? Like I am really pleased with hybrid, but this is one step, right? This is one step in a way to going back to full school. This virus is going to be here for years. We cannot be hybrid for years. And I just really hope that, you know, whatever plan we choose, uh, we can see this as a stepping stone to a full school model. Somebody, some teacher said earlier, we have an educational obligation to support our students, and I totally agree. All students, we need to support all students. And a lot of people are struggling with hybrid and a lot of people are struggling without hybrid. A lot of people are struggling with remote very desperately. We heard that in the first caller. I also think we can learn a lot by looking even much closer than Ireland and England and New Zeal- New Zealand, the gold standard, right? We could even just go over to Hatfield, Deerfield, Williston, Montessori. What are they doing? How are they doing it? And what can we do to implement that? So again, thank you so much for figuring out a way to bring our students back. I'm really happy that we're going hybrid. Please stay the course and go hybrid. I think there's a lot of cynicism. I think a lot of us think that we're getting this hybrid now and then as soon as numbers change, we're not going to get it. And I'm just really applaud the fact that you've managed to figure out how to do that. I want to echo on a close by echoing Kate, uh, who, you know, she's an immunocompromised nurse, an immunocompromised nurse at Leeds, who just said she wants to bring everyone back. So I think that we need to listen to that and, and respect it. That's somebody from inside the schools who's supportive of a hybrid plan. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you so much. The next hand that's raised goes by the name of iPhone. I'm not sure who that is. I'm not sure if you're calling in by iPhone. But if you could unmute and let us know who you are and where you live. I've sent them the ask to unmute signal. iPhone? Okay. Sorry, I can't seem to get a response. I'll go on to the next person whose hand is raised and we can try to, um, try to work with whoever that is. If they can contact us. The next, uh, person whose hand is raised has the initials GM, Greater Mutz, East, uh, well, I can't really, and then it says two full days, please. So I'm not sure who that is. Great, uh, GM, the initials.
Yes, hi. Thank you very much. And the last name is Mutziki.
Mutziki, thank you.
Yes. And I live in Northampton and my child goes to JSS. So I fully support Liz B. You know, what she said earlier, because we are as a family in the same position as she is. And I have to say though, you are, as a boy, you are not going to be able to make everybody happy when you make your final decision. But we as a community need to take a small step forward and not just be at a standstill. Mr. Mike Stern, I respectfully disagree with you when you said it was all about childcare. It is definitely not all about childcare. And speaking to the teachers, I truly respect and appreciate all that you've been doing for our children. But I do beg you to reconsider and support the two-day hybrid. Now please think about your students' socialization with other students and learning from you, the trained person, their trained educators. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Mutziki. The next person whose hand is raised is Erica Karen.
Hi, um, so my name's Erica Karen. I'm a Hatfield resident. Sorry, my cat is on my notes, so I need to just get my notes. I'm a Hatfield resident. I am the choral director at JFK Middle School. I'm not an elementary teacher currently. I have been an elementary teacher in the past and elementary music education will always hold a big piece of my heart. I do want to say that I feel like we have been hurting for so long on both sides of the coin, that we, that we are forgetting to see the bigger picture in some respects. I don't think that guilting the school committee one way or the other is the way to go. And I feel that for some people, their hurt is so strong that they are feeling the need to, to express that. And I respect that and understand that, however, I don't feel it's productive. I think that when we are looking at a hybrid plan, I'm not afraid to go back to school. I'm not afraid to go back hybrid. I, I have the, the privilege to feel that way and I will go back. However, I want to go back and serve all my students. I don't want to go back and serve half of them and have half of them be asynchronous a lot of the time. That doesn't feel equitable to me. That doesn't feel equitable when I have students that are severely immunocompromised or have family members who are severely immunocompromised. And I know I'm talking about immunocompromised. I suffer from mental health problems too. I suffer with anxiety and depression on a great level. And being home has been extraordinarily hard for me. However, I do think that all health problems, all health issues, regardless of mental or physical, are valid and equal. And I want to be able to serve all of my students, whether they have a health, a physical health condition or a mental health condition. And I know that this is an elementary, this is a meeting about, about the elementary plan, but it's going to level up. And there are students, we should be considering their social, emotional learning on both ends of the spectrum. And so I'm not asking for a vote to be one way or another. All I'm asking is that we think about the equity and go from there and understand that everyone here is working for the best of the students in the city. Not for my own self-interests or your own self-interests or the school committee's self-interest or Dr. Provost's self-interest. We are all here to work together to provide a safe and equitable environment so that we can properly teach our students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next, oh, actually, um, we had the, um, uh, individual who was got, goes by iPhone, or at least that's what their, uh, their Zoom handle was signed up as iPhone, left the meeting and has come back. So I want to just go back to them to see if they've been able to unmute themselves to offer comment. iPhone?
I, yes, I have.
Yes, I have. I was able to attach the microphone to it. I apologize for that. My name is Jill Underwood and I'm a parent of a senior in Northampton High School. Until Erica's comments, I didn't realize this meeting was about elementary school reconsiderations only. So on that note, I realized maybe my comments aren't exactly appropriate for this particular meeting, but I think they're valid. Because I have to say that I applaud the teachers have been doing a tremendous job. They've been just as dedicated and even more so now during remote learning than we, I could have ever expected. However, my student is having the most difficult time with fully remote learning and has gone from almost straight A's to now failing. So I know I speak for other parents who have children that do not have a conducive learning environment at home, who are babysitting their younger siblings because their parents have to go to work. There are many, many situations like that. And I think that maybe we're so hyper focused on the virus that we're, we might be losing sight of what these children are expected to have to do in terms of remote learning and other situations at home. Many of these kids, their only solace is to come to school and excel at school. So I just ask everyone to consider that aspect too. Yes, the virus is real. However, I have absolutely no concerns with my child returning to school full time or as much as possible for their benefit, their social, their emotional, their mental health. And I know that the schools will take very cautious measures to follow CDC and pediatric guidelines. But I just wanted to put that out as a parent who has a senior. That is not just elementary. So thank you again for welcoming me in. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks for your comments. The next person whose hand is raised is Joe Greco.
Thank you for your time. I want to express that I think our school system needs to go to a full school system, full every day in school learning as soon as possible. I have a fourth grader who's been stuck with a permanent substitute since the start of the school year. He's learned nothing. He has been isolated and in been the public since school started. And by in the public means he comes to my work every day and has to learn from work every day. And has learned very little, has had no support from the school system. We cannot sustain this. We are losing ground. I am losing ground and have to turn to other sources to educate my son. Like yes, I've hired tutors. I'll have to hire more tutors. Or we will learn to figure out how to afford another way to go. We will leave the school system if you continue to not educate my son. I'm tired. I'm disappointed. I'm let down. We need to move to the hybrid model, two full days and push as best we can to get full in-school learning. Right now, we are stagnant. I'm at a third grade level for a fourth grader and we're not going anywhere. We need to improve our education system and we need to get past this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. The next person whose hand is raised is Nicole Roach. Nicole?
Hi. Oh, I'm in shadows. That's okay. Hopefully you can hear me. Yes, we can. Okay, great. My name's Nicole Roach. I live here in Northampton. I have a JFK eighth grader and I have twins who are in third grade at Bridge Street. And I think I can speak from a lot of different experiences. I have a child who has a compromised immune system. So the notion that, you know, people are throwing around compromised immune systems kind of willy nilly. I find offenses because for, for our family, it really is, you know, our only big choice is to stay remote. All three of my children, one of my children's safe, to keep all of us safe. I'm sorry, I'm hearing so much feedback. I hope you can still hear me.
Hannah, I just would ask if people could please mute themselves who aren't, who don't have the floor. I hear it too. And I'm trying to find where it's coming from and I'm having a hard time because there's 300 people here. So go ahead. I've paused your time. So go ahead.
Okay. Okay. So just to make my, my point clear, you know, I've heard a few people mention compromised immune systems as if that's something folks are throwing around carelessly. And in my family, it's a, it's a, you know, a very serious life or death situation. It's important that our families stay safe so that we can keep our child safe, so that we can keep our community safe. And hopefully one day I'll end up back in public school together. I think the reason we're all here tonight is because, as we've seen in the past, decisions were made without fully listening to the voices of the most experienced people, who the teachers in the classrooms. Had we had a fully fleshed out conversation with teachers and listened to their experiences and their expertise, I think we would have had this plan, this half day model planned sooner. I recommend that the school committee accept the NACE plan. I think, you know, people want to call this the NACE plan. This is the teacher's plan. The teachers came together as a union, as a group of professionals to say, this is what's safest and best for our students, the most equitable option, and it's what's great for us. And so I urge everybody to listen to the teachers. And, you know, I think all of our emotions are really high right now. I'm sure you can hear it in my voice. I'm, I'm as upset and sad about the situation as anyone, but we have to, we have to keep our minds on two things, safety and equity. And I think the NACE plan gets to both of those. That's it.
Thank you very much, Nicole. The next person whose hand is raised is Rachel Baker. Rachel?
Oh, hi. Sorry. Trying to get the video on too. Hi, thank you. Some of you might notice I often pop up close to the end of the public comment section and it's because I really don't want to talk. But once again, I find a, like a side of the story is missing. And so I've just, I've been hearing this, I guess, false narrative of this division between the students who are thriving in remote learning and the students who are struggling in remote learning. And that, you know, we want our kids to stay home because they're just doing so great with remote learning. And the reality is that I have a five-year-old. He's doing remote kindergarten. So you can imagine like as amazing as his teachers are, his, his main teacher and his specials teachers, he loves the specials, but he's not thriving. He's struggling. It's really hard. He doesn't make it to every single part of the day. He's not learning as, as much as he would in person. But he can't go to school. And it's not because I'm not willing to risk my own immunocompromised life or my husband's adult immunocompromised life. I'm not willing to risk the life of his two-year-old brother. So like Nicole, I also feel like this, oh, I'm immunocompromised. It's being thrown around. But this feels a little different, right? I'm not willing to make this decision for my two-year-old who can't make a decision to risk his own life and let his kindergarten brother go to school. And, but my five-year-old is not thriving. And so I'm not just saying this to talk about my own situation and my own kid. But I just see the half-day model as being, none of it's equitable, right? I get it. We, he has to stay home. It's not going to be the same and he's not going to get as much learning in either plan. But I do see his learning as being spread out over five days. I was going to say four days. Over five different days in smaller chunks, which as an educator, I know is better for learning than squeezing all of his learning into a couple of days in the full day model. And so I would just advocate for that half-day model. Again, I think those same teachers that you are, everybody's wanting to send their kids back to, those are the people that we should trust. They're thinking about equity. A teachers' union is thinking about equity for students. That's awesome. And so we should really be looking at this half-day model and realizing that some kids who have to stay home are also struggling and they need that learning spread out as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person whose hand is raised is Megan Weschler. Megan?
Hello. Thank you for this moment. I'm just going to talk briefly. So mostly what I want to talk about is the importance of the communication that's coming from the school, from the Provost, from Mr. Provost and others to communicate about what's happening in a very clear and concise way. I feel like it's been very spotty and it makes it very difficult to understand what's going on and what the plans are. And even, and so every time some communication comes, there's glaring gaps of information and also misinformation and misrepresentation. So it makes it very hard as a parent to understand what is being communicated, what the plan is, to be able to make an informed and educated decision about what's going, what you're, what's being presented. So I would just really stress, you know, even when the, there's such a push for expediency that there's a lack of attention to detail. And that creates more stress and more anxiety for everybody involved because the information is not there. So the, the survey that was sent out was poorly written and it was poorly named, which made it very misleading as to what was being represented. There was a lack of information about when you're signing up for, when you're moving to the hybrid model or the remote model, when the availability would be for you to change your decision. This other letter that came out on Friday came out with very short notice in between this meeting and that. And even what was described in the, the fourth, the third grid, that was the remote only grid, I think had errors in it in communication to describe what that remote only school structure would look like. It talked about being in person, but the model was supposed to be remote. So this just perpetuates anxiety. I'm also speaking as a healthcare provider. I work in the healthcare industry and I know people are really feeling like this is being delayed and we're holding out. But I want to clarify that all of us who are working in healthcare have to constantly revisit and relook at our workflows and our designs because it is changing all the time. And what's happening with the virus is changing. And so it's important that what was decided two or three weeks ago was got the attention of the families and the feedback and that it went to redesign because that's what's happening all around the world. That's what's happening in healthcare to provide safe, equitable health to all of the patient populations. To just make a decision and go forward doesn't mean that you're actually providing what's necessary and needed at the time. And it will need to continue to change over time. So I applaud you for taking the time. I know it's very frustrating for everybody, myself, where I sit. I don't think any of them are very great plans. We're not in a great situation. This is, is just incredibly hard for everybody, everywhere. So I, I just would really stress that you guys pay close attention to the communication with the families about all of that and make sure that what you're putting out is correctly represented with as much information as possible.
Thank you very much. Thank you. The next person who has their hand raised is Cecilia Shiner. Cecilia?
I don't know if my video is on maybe. I can't see it, but I unmuted myself. Can everyone hear me? Or can you hear me? Hi. My name is Cecilia and I have a two-year-old at Jackson Street. And I love her teacher. We've been doing our best speaking up for her because the wheels are coming off the cart. I'm not trying to emotionally manipulate anyone, but to say that we can keep this going, as other people have said, it, it feels unsustainable. I don't want to deny anyone access to anything in terms of education or belittle teachers' experience or anything. But to be honest, no one knows what's going on in our houses except for us. My kid is suffering. She used to love school and now she's singing that school sucks and school is uncool. And, and that's just really heartbreaking to hear. And I think we need to listen to medicine, to the medical professionals, to the people who are, who are studying the dilation systems. I totally wouldn't want to send her to an unsafe environment, but I have colleagues down in Connecticut and they've been in-person or hybrid since September. And I think it's important to, yes, we're going to have to keep evaluating this because the virus is changing and the rates are going up. And who knows, by the time second grade hits on November 30th, hybrid might be off the table. But I think we need to think that our way forward, you know, someone mentioned that the half-days have less transitions. No, they have less transitions in the schools, but not in the houses. In our houses, we're transitioning them all the time and it's really difficult to get them to do that. They don't want to listen to us. We're their parents. And so to get them to do the work, to, to stay mentally healthy, you know, it's just really hard to think about how we can keep going. You know, someone mentioned also the buses. I worry about the, keep the people in the buses. We don't qualify for the bus. We're like a mile away from the school, which is too far for my second grader to walk. So we have to go, we have to drive. But the 22 minutes was an average time for a bus, which means it's average. So there are people with longer bus commutes. And if you take away even 22 minutes from 45 minutes, that's not a lot of time to get your kid in, get them to eat, get them to set up their computer and try to do anything else. I mean, I just picture my kid refusing to do anything in the afternoon after in-person learning in the morning. So my heart goes out to all of you. I don't know what, there's no good decisions. So I just wanted to share our experience.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your comment and for sharing your experience. The next person whose hand is raised is David Peters. David, go ahead and unmute and let us know where you live.
Yeah. Hi, I'm Dave Peters. I live on Harlow Avenue. My, I have a fourth grader at Bridge Street. And I wanted to say, I'm very much in favor of the full day hybrid option based on my own child's needs. But what I did want to say was, one thing I'd like to see is, or like to ask is, whatever model is chosen ultimately, what does success look like for that model and how are we going to measure it? How are we going to tell ourselves in a few weeks or months, this is working okay? And where, what are we going to do to trigger a decision to move to something else? You know, epidemiologically, educationally, and also in terms of what kind of information is coming back from parents at home who are trying to deal with these different environments their children are going to be in now? And what kind of feedback parents can provide to help the school committee and the teachers and, and you know, and, and everybody in the school system make decisions about how to adjust things going forward, whether that means moving to full-time, continuing with a hybrid program, tweaking a hybrid program, or, you know, in some cases epidemiologically, possibly going back to full remote. What is the data, you know, what is the hard data we're going to look at and make a decision based on? Because my feeling is we, we've, we have collectively moved away from some of the recommendations that have come from the state and from other vectors, which is fine. However, we base on ourselves. I just would like to say, ask the question of, or request that we put out some things that we think are going to be the data points we focus on going forward when we're making decisions. Because, you know, all of us are very emotional and our decision-making is very emotional right now. And to be able to focus on, you know, some kinds of data, to have this discussion around would be really helpful going forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. The next person whose hand is raised is Denise McConne. Or hope I got that right?
Yeah, you did. Thank you. I just wanted to say.
Let us know where you live, Denise. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. I have two children in Jackson Street School and I live on Perkins Avenue. We have all worked hard. This community has tried hard. Our teachers want a safe place to work. Our students want a safe place to learn. Our caregivers have work to do in their homes and at other locations. This time has challenged our sense of providing an equitable community. This time has challenged our sense of providing an equitable community for all community members, not just those of us with the privilege to attend this meeting. And it's not lost on me who's here and who's not. This process is ripping our community apart. What you have witnessed tonight is a fracturing in our community. Our community is fractured. That's what this process has created. By deliberating and second guessing, we are delaying this process. I can't stand on the playground now next to other parents, distanced, masked, and feel like I can have a conversation. Parents, just so you guys are aware, start a conversation now, not with, "how are you?" Or like some sketchy sense of trying to figure out like, "hey, were you happy this weekend or sad after the election results were announced?" No, no. Now we speak of the survey that was sent around. Did you choose remote or in-person? Because I chose, you know, whatever I chose. And we sit on pins and needles trying to guess what the correct answer might be. I am the mother of two children, one in first grade and one in fourth grade. We are a two-worker household and one child who is asthmatic. I'm not exactly feeling safe sending my kids to an indoor space. That said, remote learning requires an incredible amount of executive functioning skills. Both of my kids are managing four different, first grade, fourth grade, four different software packages each. Numerous logins, Wi-Fi issues, and on and on. Uploading this document over here and that one there, but no one, no, that one needs to be handed in in person this morning. Remember the teacher sent a note on Class Dojo at midnight last night? And she was on Class Dojo at midnight? Like, come on. We have no idea what aspect of this learning experience is essential. None. Caregivers are not considered to be part of the learning support system at all. We've opted out of specials, not because we devalue them, we don't, but because one of our kids has developed like repetitive tics. It's not okay. This is not an ideal learning environment for anyone. I know that, but we cannot continue like this for another six months. We just can't. And if I say I chose in-person, I'm ostracized from my community. Please help us. Just pick something. Continuity matters. The more you deliberate, the more we sit waiting, pecking at each other. So at this point, I urge the committee, stay focused. There is no easy answer. Please stay focused. Do not get distracted. Do not try to create yet another version of something you think might be optimal. Talented people develop these two proposals. Don't change them. There's absolutely no optimal solution. I study mathematically optimal solutions. I'm not kidding. This decision will hurt. Breathe it in. It will hurt. I've actually attended hours and hours of your meetings this week. Please don't change these two plans. Pick one.
Thank you so much Denise. We appreciate it. You're, you're at time. So thank you so much. The next person who has their hand raised to speak is Andrea Agito. Andrea?
I love that I'm going after Denise. Thank you Denise for your comments because I know a lot of us in the community echo many of those. I would like to thank the committee and Dr. Provost, Mayor Narcoitz, and for giving us this opportunity to have this conversation. This is incredibly hard for everyone. And I know we all know that, so. But I do want to share and I, I felt compelled to share that our educators, and I know many people have commented on this, have worked really hard to develop this plan, to find the most equitable solutions while still keeping everyone safe. And I would just like to share with you the list from our educators that has been brainstormed in multiple meetings. The benefits of the half-day model, as well as some concerns that they have about the full-day models. And then I would echo what Denise said, which is, we have to just, just pick one, right? So, but I would like to share that the half-day model offers a way to increase focused in-person instruction for all students in a gradual and safe way. Under a half-day hybrid model, students get direct instruction either in-person or synchronously on Zoom every day. In the half-day model, teachers can teach in-person students in the morning and synchronously online so that students have some form of synchronous instruction every day. ESPs and fully remote teachers could provide additional remote assistance and instruction and check-ins for students during their remote times when the in-person teacher is with the other group. Students can still participate in class even if they need to miss in-person learning. We want students to stay home if they are feeling slightly ill or have symptoms. And so this, this model would support daily learning for all students that wouldn't need to go away. Students could take their meals to go and avoid being unmasked in, in the classroom, which as stated by experts, creates the most risk. The half-day model provides the most equitable situation for hybrid and remote learners. It's really striking to me that in the full-day model, there would be 23 hours for in-person learners, but only 12 hours for remote learners. Offering similar amounts of synchronous instruction time, which allows educators to continue their planning and follow their curriculum and benchmark goals for their students. High-need students receiving in-person instruction will be able to continue with their current schedule and will also be able to join their peers for the four half-days. High-need students currently not receiving in-person services may be able to attend for four half-days in the morning instead of depending, instead of two, depending on the numbers. And all specials and intervention, interventions will continue to be offered remotely. Concerns about a full-day model is that under a full-day hybrid model, teachers who have more than 10 students choosing hybrid would have their classes split between two rooms. From the latest numbers I received from Dr. Provost and the principals, that seems to be about five at Ryan Road School, one at Bridge Street School, seven at Leeds and five classes at Jackson Street. And there were still, when these numbers were given to me, there were still many undecided families. So those could be even different. In that situation, there would be an ESP in one room and the teacher in the other that, and they would have to move back and forth between the two rooms. This could work in one of two ways. One, the teacher presents the lesson in one room and then goes to the second room to present the same lesson while the ESP stays to support the students in the first room as they work. But how would that ESP know what the lesson is that they were supporting if they weren't in the room when the teacher presented it? When would the teacher and ESP be able to collaborate and plan these lessons if the teachers are fully, are, are, are working and supporting students all day, each of the days of the week? The other option would be.
You're at three minutes, so if you'd say any way you could just kind of put up.
I'm just gonna, the last couple, that the students would be in the building for the full day and that amount of instruction is, is not necessarily a full day of instruction because of routines that would, that would need to take away from instructional time. And that how difficult it is for students to stay masked and focused for such a long period of time. Pandemic education is not what anyone is used to and our students would need to be gradually increasing that time that they could be in the building. There's many more items on here from our students and our, from our educators about concerns that they have for their students. But again, the last one was that eating indoors creates the highest risk for everyone involved in being exposed. Thank you for your time and thank you for deliberating this really difficult decision.
Thank you. Thank you so much Andrea. The next person whose hand is raised is Danielle Piper Johnson. Danielle, if you could unmute and just let us know where you live.
Hi, thank you. My name is Danielle Johnson and I live on Eva Circle. I have a third and a fifth grader at Jackson Street. And basically, we just wanted to kind of share our experience a bit. And I feel like when the original models came out without any support for remote learning, really, the one email I got from a school official said, one to two check-ins a week, but not promising it's by a teacher. It felt very coercive, like the pressure was, unless you had a dramatic reason why you could not, you must send your kid to school and that's the only way there would be learning. So I'm very happy to hear that there's been a scaling back of that. I personally feel that the more robust you can make the remote learning experience, the more of us who have the opportunity to choose it, where it's working well enough, we get out of your way, right? So we don't muck up. We get, we lower those numbers of people who, who need to be in-person for whatever the reason is, personal health, professional, any of it, right? We get out of your way so that you don't have more than 10 students in each class and you don't need to hire additional and you don't need to split. But if we don't have a robust remote model, then it feels like the only option to provide our child with an education is the pressure of having to send them back and creating more challenge. I would also just say that, you know, remote hasn't been perfect for us in any way, shape or form. We've, we've definitely had struggles and remembering back to kids putting on boots and snow pants. We had struggles last year too. They're different, but I would just like to say that my third grader and my fifth grader have done an amazing job and have grown up a lot. And that is really, really because of the amazing teachers they've had. So Mr. Slattery, who spoke earlier today, in this meeting teaches my fifth grader and Ms. Cameron, who's not on the call, teaches my third grader and they have been flexible and they have been, they've adjusted and my kids laugh every day and they tell stories every day about something that happened at school and they connect with their friends and they tell stories to their teachers. And I just also want to appreciate that there is that happening too. And I know that it's not everywhere. It's obvious that our experiences are very diverse right now. And I just want to also make space for the more of us that have the privilege of saying, "this is working well enough and we will stay home." We make more space for those of you that need to go back for whatever reason. But without that remote, robust remote option, we flood the schools and it becomes hard everywhere. And so I just also thank you, Mr. Slattery. Thank you, Ms. Cameron. Thank you, Jackson Street. I really appreciate the immense amount of work that those, specifically the individual teachers are doing to connect. Thank you.
Thank you so much Danielle for your comments. The next person whose hand is raised is Johanna Rading. Johanna?
Hi, my name is Johanna Rading. I use she/her pronouns. I live on Maple Street and I have two children, one at Jackson Street and one at JFK. I'm not going to advocate for any specific model, a hybrid model tonight. I think there are children, for every child who is struggling, there are children that are doing well enough or even thriving. And there were children before the pandemic when we were in school full-time that were doing the same. We had children struggling and we had children thriving. I'm here tonight though to advocate for the teacher voices. I've sat through many of these meetings over the last many months and I have heard so many things from our teachers, speaking up. These are our educators, our experts. And I think it's important to listen to their voices. They know our children. They know teaching and learning and they have all of our children's wellbeing at, at the forefront. We've heard many people urge to listen to public health experts and we are doing so and trusting that it is safe to bring students back. I also urge that we listened to, listen to our teachers and I, and put their, our trust in their expertise. Our society has a long history of devaluing the voices of our teachers and a long history of those in power not listening to teachers or any of our experts in education. And it is one of the many systemic barriers that exist in education today. If we have, if we are to ever have an equitable district, can listening to the voices of our teachers be one of those barriers that we break down tonight? Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person who signed up is Heather Culver. Heather, can you please unmute yourself and just let us know where you live?
Hi, I live in Clinton. I've got two kids at Ryan Road Elementary School, one in fifth and one in third. I'm gonna kind of speak on my personal preference as a parent that has two kids that are on IP's and have had the pleasure of being in-person for an hour and 45 minutes each day, four times a week, not on Wednesdays. My youngest, who is in third grade, wants to be at school no matter what situation. And he has done well in both remotely and in-person, but he's struggling in-person.
Heather, we, I think we've lost you a little bit there. Are you there Heather? I think we've lost Heather. Am I the only one who can't hear Heather?
Can you hear me? My internet's unstable. It's not gonna work unfortunately.
Okay, no problem. I paused your timer when you went out, so you're back. So go ahead and continue.
I'm not sure of the last thing I said, but today was a kind of a eye-opening experience. You know, my son has reading support in the morning from nine to 10 each day. This morning, he decided he wanted to go to school. He wanted to sit at the picnic table outside. He wanted just to be near the building. So we called up the school and unfortunately, the internet doesn't reach to the picnic tables. And so there was no easy option to be like, "we're gonna stay home and do it." So brought the meltdown and everything else that come along with it. But he turned back around and he did well, you know, getting back at 10 o'clock at school with another transition that he does every day. But there is the high thing that he is not thriving. He's struggling. And with that, it's hard for me as a parent knowing, going back in a hybrid model, that eventually these teachers are gonna have to deal with these challenging behaviors that I'm dealing with. And for that reason, I have decided to keep my child home remotely because there hasn't been talk about what's gonna happen if a child has a meltdown in a classroom. What supports are gonna be in place for these kids that do have noses with mental health disorder or anything? Because I can do that at home right now as much as it's hard for me as a mom. But I can't physically send him into a classroom to disrupt 10 kids who are there trying to actively learn. And that's something that's gotta be discussed on some level of how, when all these kids do come back, how we're gonna support them. And then it's the same thing with my fifth grader. He is academically behind and there hasn't been the idea or much discussion of how to support him to get up to par. So that in my personal preference, there is no correct model for my situation because I do have two kids that are already behind grade level and they're not catching up. But the teachers have worked with them. My fourth, fifth grader, I mean, broke his arm the second day of in-person service. He learned remotely from the hospital room. He learned when he had to go into surgery. And without that, like right now, he's home for a week out of in-person services due to an infection in his arm, but he's still learning remotely. That would have been a week of just packets sent home for him. So with that flexibility, we're still learning, but it's not the same as in-person. Sorry, I'm talking in circles because I lost my place of where I was gonna talk. But I, I really just hope that when we do return, because I am on the flip side, kids with IP's and mental health, that there is talk around how we're gonna support these kids if there are meltdowns and if how furthering that's gonna happen.
Thank you so much Heather. Thank you so much for, for commenting.
I don't know how to end this. I'm all set.
Thank you. Thank you so much. The next person who has spoken, who has their hand raised to speak is Lauren Duffy. Lauren, if you could unmute and again, just let us know where you live.
Hello and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Lauren and I live in Leeds. I have a first grader at Leeds Elementary. I have so much empathy for the first parent who spoke tonight. My family has some similarities to their experience. I really need to implore you that it's not equity if you ignore the needs of these kids who are actively experiencing a detriment from remote learning. It's not just that it isn't working for them, but it is actively setting them back. All we are asking for right now is that the committee make good on its promise to have just two-fifths of their week in a modality that actually works for them. Those of us in that situation know that we are probably not getting any instruction that actually works for how our kids' brains process information for the other three-fifths of the school week. I think that's a pretty generous compromise. I also want to point out that both of these plans were written by professionals. I do appreciate that the teachers came together and wrote a plan. I also respect that the other plans, the one that was voted on previously and the full-day plan proposed this evening, were also written by professionals who have dedicated their careers to understanding how to deliver education. I feel that if a situation like this, this pandemic, isn't precisely why you hire someone with a cali- isn't precisely why you hire someone with the caliber of Dr. Provost and his staff to provide leadership and direction, then I don't know what is. Lastly, I just have to say that the half-day plan is a total nightmare for caregivers. I do believe that our consideration is not nearly as important as what is best for the students. But I have to point out that a three-hour school day, especially for those of us who live close enough to the school that we don't get transportation services, gives us no useful amount of time to do something else like, you know, work. Um, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Um, the next person whose hand is raised is Patrick Bowen. Patrick, can you uh, unmute and let us know where you live?
Good evening.
Yes?
My name is Patrick Bowen. I live at nine Harold Street in Florence. My son is a first grader at Leeds. Um, he should have been starting hybrid next week from what I understood. Uh, but the move to hybrid has yet bit, yet again, been delayed by the choice to yet again, de- debate another plan. The merits of this specific minimally considered and incompletely formed plan that will take weeks to implement is not what I want to focus on tonight. My comment, uh, wanna focus on, I feel like the school committee is operating in bad faith and is avoiding following through on their tough decisions that are part of their duty to the, to this community. After the committee voted eight to two in favor of hybrid, it was the job of the negotiating subcommittee to come to an agreement with NACE to implement it. Two of the three members of that subcommittee were the dissenting votes for hybrid, member Voss, member Sarah Cox. Instead of an updated agreement with NACE to execute the superintendent's plan and get students back in school as soon as possible, the result was a new plan that just so happens to align closely with the dissenting members wanted instead of what the eight yes votes directed. This is the definition of bad faith. Each delay of hybrid is akin to Lucy pulling away the football from Charlie Brown. Being repeatedly tricked is part of the frustration you are hearing from people tonight in these comments. These delays are not neutral for our community. Each, each delay prioritizes those, the most privileged, who have the opportunity to live in the tightest COVID bubbles in our community over kids falling behind permanently. Kids who may not learn to read and whose mental health suffers each and every day because of remote learning. And we're not hearing from a lot of those people at these meetings. The further delays shows us that the committee also doesn't see the high-needs kids who are on waiting lists as the emergency that it is. The existence of these waiting lists are morally wrong and illegal. Why should the community put its trust in the school committee if we're gonna keep on debating these things open over which result in an effective remote forever policy? I know that there's been blaming of higher-level politicians for the situation, but it isn't Donald Trump's fault that we're basically the only school committee in the area that can't make and stick with a decision. It's not Charlie Burke's fault the committee thinks there is always one better plan over the rainbow. It's not Commissioner Riley's fault that these committees' unproductive marathon meetings are not leading to any better outcomes for our district. Versus our other local districts who are spending far more time on making these decisions to achieve worse outcomes. Why did the JOMC debate superintendent's plan for two months for hybrid if we're not going to use the superintendent's plan? Why are we, how many more times are we gonna do these meetings? How many more plans are gonna be? We've been stuck on square one for five months now. Pencil's down on plans. It's time to get kids in school and to act. I asked the mayor to be strong and controlling discussion at these meetings to prevent other further, further decisions. We need to stop fighting over the reopening plan and put Dr. Provost's plan into effect today. Budget season is, is on the horizon and there's other work for this committee to do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Patrick, for your comments. Uh, the next person who has their hand raised is Lauren Fleet, Fleet or Flight?
Flight, thank you very much. So hello, everybody. Either way, we are going to have a hybrid model that is known. I'm here to take a look at the situation as objectively as possible. With that, I'm having a difficult time understanding the so strong feelings for only having two full days of in-school learning rather than four shorter days of in-school learning with the remote additive which would benefit both sides. There are strong valid situations on both sides of this narrative, including the teacher's narrative which adds the third. Thinking briefly about the attention span of elementary age children, it's very long. It isn't very long and most of the transition periods are what tend to shake up their days. I feel strongly that many students who are having so much trouble with being stuck at home would benefit greatly from an almost daily attendance at the school while still being able to equally care for the students who are choosing to stay remote for whatever reason. Shorter periods of learning for both groups spread out would be a situation that both groups would benefit academically and mentally. Add that to the fact that our teachers have put together a plan that would take the steps needed to make a smooth transition to eventually getting back to in-person learning that would benefit the largest group of people on both sides of the fence, including the educators themselves. Objectively, with the information given, the half-day plan would be the best course of action for the most people. So I would just like to, the teachers and the committee and know that no matter what, we are going to be hybrid and there is going to be in-school, school learning one way or another. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lauren. Uh, the appears to be the final person with their hand raised is uh, Melissa Lujewski. Melissa? Melissa? Melissa Lujewski. Okay, Melissa may have stepped away from her screen.
There, I see her speaking. Her video is on, but her audio does not seem to be working.
Yeah, she's um, she's not muted, so uh, Melissa, can you, can you hear us? Cause we can't hear you. Um, ah, I see you, but maybe try turning your video off. Sometimes that helps the um, the signal. Now you're muted again, um. Okay, go ahead, Melissa. We can't hear you for some reason. Yeah, we can't hear you. Sorry. Sorry, that was the last person's time. Um, okay, so um, there's no one else that appears to have their hand up to speak. Um, sorry that we were unable to hear the last speaker. So I will now um, conclude then the public comment period. And we will move back into the uh, regular portion of the meeting. Thank you to everyone who offered a public comment this evening. And so I guess I'll move back to where we left off with um, member Gold, and um, there was a presentation on the uh, potential revised um, hybrid plan. And I guess I would put it back to the members as to how we proceed. Obviously, um, we have an existing plan. And so if there's a want to uh, move to a revised plan, that would require a motion and a second and uh, and then a debate on that particular motion. Okay. Um, member Kaufman has his hand up. Member Kaufman?
Thank you. Um, Mayor Narcos, is it possible to um, just vote on one or the other plan? Would that be it? I don't know how to do that by a motion, but rather than selecting one and voting on it, and if it doesn't pass, selecting the other one, is it possible? We can just vote on which, which one we prefer? I think that was the intention of this evening?
Um, well, I mean, I think, I guess my, I guess my question is that um, as several folks have pointed out, that we voted on a plan um, eight to two at a prior meeting. And we're moving forward with that plan. And now we're, we've brought forward a potential replacement for that plan. So really, to me, the question is, are we going to replace the plan with this replacement plan? So really, it's, to me, it's a straight up or down vote on whether or not to move to this other plan.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I can understand that. I would, I would say this is um, I would say we're, we're, um, in my opinion, the, the um, just to be clear, the last full-day plan was much different than this full-day plan. I do think, just to be clear, the, the previous model of full-day provided um, very, very little um, support for students who selected remote. In fact, I think it provided virtually nothing and this one provides a lot more. So that's why um, I intend to vote for this plan. And I, and I think that um, that was the selling point, unless I would have voted for the half-day. So technically, I would not want to go back to the plan that we voted for. I would vote to go back to the plan that was presented this evening. Um, and I think just by looking at some of the heads, at least one, if not two of my colleagues agree with me on that, so.
So, so you should make a motion then?
Well, my motion, what I'm trying to get at is just for efficiency to say, I uh, is it okay to say I make a motion that we vote on one of the two plans that we uh, were presented with tonight? Is that possible in the?
So you mean that instead of yes or no, we vote full day, half day?
Yes.
Okay, um, I don't know, I'm, it's, I guess there's nothing in our rules. I'm looking at the parliamentarian. I don't know if there's anything in our rules that prevent that. I don't know. Um, typically, we're voting, you know, for something or against something and um, so I mean, I, I believe that if you feel that the full-day model that was presented tonight that you feel strongly about, then I don't, I'm not sure why making a motion on that would not serve that same purpose. As opposed to, I just, it's just challenging how you would structure that. You typically, it's a yes or no vote on these things.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with doing that. So I would make a motion that we vote to approve the full-day um, option, hybrid option.
Okay, is there a second on that motion?
Second?
Okay, seconded by member Fallon. Um, okay, is there discussion or debate on this particular motion? I see hands going up. Member Goldman and then member Gold.
Thank you. Um, I'm just looking for some clarity. Member Kaufman, are you saying that we voted for a plan and the full-day plan that's being presented tonight is significantly different than the one we selected before? So by making this motion, you're saying you're voting for the full, or you're making a motion to support the full-day plan in tonight's presentation versus the half-day plan presented in tonight's presentation?
Yes.
Thank you.
Member Gold, you have your hand up.
Um, yeah, I was waiting to see if there was anyone else who was gonna make a motion. And then Lonnie went with it. Um, I was gonna make a motion to um, make to approve the half-day plan. And so I guess I'll say, and I've had a statement on it, and I guess I will explain uh, just so the public knows and the school committee knows why I would vote in favor of the half-day plan. Um, my vote for the half-day plan is fully anchored in the academic, social, emotional needs of students, actually all students. I do know that the half-day plan will be a tremendous challenge for every caregiver's schedule, both the in-person and remote caregivers. But I truly believe that it's the best option for every caregiver's child. The half-day plan allows every student the opportunity for daily time with their current teacher and some current classmates for academic, social, and emotional development. And this next point is, I think incredibly, incredibly important to wrap our heads around. The half-day plan ensures families who opt to remain with their currently assigned teacher, that their child will have time with an educator who has already spent about thirty days working with each child, studying each child, and planning for supporting each student's growth. The half-day plan also ensures there's much-needed small-group work for students and their teachers, which is critical at this time to address each student's individual needs. Even before COVID, if a parent had asked me, and for those of you who don't know, I am a public school teacher, elementary public school teacher of nearly twenty years, that if any parent asked me what would be the greatest change that could support their child's growth, it would be have a dramatic shift in class size, even if it reduced the total time in the day. And that is what the half-day plan actually allows for. Um, in closing, I want to apologize to the community and to the educators and administrators for how long this process has taken. And to acknowledge that the delay in stalling and rehashing has delayed a much-needed move to hybrid and hopefully soon to full in-person. And in closing, I'd like to thank um, everybody involved with this, especially um, our administrators who um, if the half-day plan does get approved, are gonna be asked to shift what their work is doing. But I think, I can't thank you all on how lucky enough we are to have folks who are willing to do what the school committee has asked and the community has asked and uh, do it with um, good faith and with all your effort. So thank you very much.
Next uh, member whose hand is raised is member Levy.
Thanks. I do have a question. Um, I, I do wanna stay, say, I'll echo member Gold's um, sentiments about regretting the amount of time that it's taken us to get to this point. And I also am not regretful of the fact that we are at this point. I think for me, well, I'll speak for myself. I, when I voted for the hybrid model a few weeks ago, it was a challenging decision because I very much felt we needed to go with the recommendation of our public health officials. And I was dismayed at the lack of support for our remote learners. And I, I vowed to ensure that we worked with our district leadership and our teachers to find a way to ensure we could support our remote learners and offer an opportunity for our, for our families who needed to go in-person to have the hybrid model. And I'm excited that we have two options right now, both of which allow us to support our hybrid students within in-person learning and support our families who need to go remote. I, I also feel that our half-day um, model would be a good one for all of the reasons that member Gold just said about, about the specific instruction and for the reasons that have been stated about supporting our high-needs students and the work that our teachers have been doing. And it's a, this is a but for me. My question for the superintendent is, is this model logistically feasible for us as a district? And, and I guess I'll focus right now on busing. We've gotta be able to get our, our students to and from schools. And we are gonna have students who are going to be there for a full day and need to get home in the afternoon. In addition to the students who need to get home in the, at the end of the half-day. Is, is that even remotely possible, one? And two, if it is remotely possible, I know that this is a hard question to answer off the top of your head. Can you give us a ballpark of the cost and whether that cost would be covered by the state because of the COVID relief packages?
So it is feasible. I mean, most things are feasible with additional resources. The, the challenge would be to um, direct more funding to transportation because we'd be picking up an additional tier. Essentially, um, we would have the the transportation costs we currently have plus the cost of bringing students in and then out in the middle of the day. I would say the minimum number on that is fifty thousand dollars. Um, it could well be more than that, but I would say, I can confidently say it'd be at least fifty thousand dollars. In terms of um, COVID funds, that's, there's no pot of money that's specifically set aside to mitigate the cost of transportation. There are a number of funds that are available for specific um, hardware pieces like the, the HEPA filters and, and other things that we've, and the computers and other devices that we've um, purchased in order to make the school safer or to implement remote learning. Um, there is a small number, there's a smaller pot of cash that's more or less unrestricted. Um, but Kami and I have been really sort of struggling to, to get our hands around how much of that has already been spent on taking care of the other costs of COVID. So um, I actually would like to hear her weigh in on whether or not the cost of transportation could fit into that third smaller pot of money that we have.
So I just wanna let the committee know, we do have um, a couple different federal grants um, that have provided funding for some of the unanticipated. that have provided funding for some of the unanticipated extra expenditures that are coming up because of COVID. Two of those grants end December 30th. So that funding source is non-existent for any expense after December 30th. We will have one grant that will continue through June. We can try to split some of that money, but there are a number of expenditures that have come up that we need to manage all of them and figure out where all of those things are going to be coming from. It's just not this one cost. And I did want to just clarify something with Tammy Lieber, if she's still on the call. Because some of the things that we get brought up is there's two parts to the transportation. It's the additional cost. But also, at the same time, we need to be working with our busing company about providing the extra tier because it's additional work for them. We do have a contract with them, but their drivers would need to work that extra tier for us to provide that full day transportation for those students going back out. And I did want to just clarify with Tammy, if she's on the call, whether it is actually the one tier that we'd be looking at or whether I believe what's more accurate is it'd be the three tiers at for the full day because we'd have to run a number of buses to get those full day students home.
So yeah, Kami, I'm still here. So yes, we would have to have in the afternoon at 2:30, you'd have to have three buses at the high school. Depending on how many sixth graders we have, I've got listed six buses going to JFK. And I would need nine buses to get Ryan Road and Leeds home and another six buses to get Bridge Street and Jackson home. And these are the counts that so far we've looked at with the first survey that people have asked for transportation and knowing the number of riders that qualify. So I did calculate that. So you're talking at a three tier after the fact. And we've got a guarantee that we're going to have drivers. We haven't even approached that contract yet. So this is a huge question. They may tell us that some of the drivers don't want to work. I am going to tell you that Durham has told me that they've lost four drivers at the Hampshire regional level because they're doing a special midday in between. And the drivers, it doesn't fit into their schedule. Some of them always did morning and afternoon because they fit in the two and a half hours in the morning, go work another job and then come back at two and drive for two and a half hours. A lot of these drivers still have these part-time jobs in between and they have families at home. They've got their kids at home that are doing the remote learning and everything else. Throwing a half a day in there may may change things up. We could lose drivers and in the meantime, we could lose half of the the buses in the afternoon until we sit down with Durham and with Vampool. Because we also have that contractor. A lot of this is up in the air.
No, I'm sorry. Can I just clarify the numbers that you shared? It sounds like the numbers you shared are total numbers of buses we need for all students. I'm curious if you have a sense of how many buses we're using right now. Are those the numbers we're using right now because of the students who are in school?
So what I did was, we have nine buses available to us at each tier. I'm running right now, three buses to the high school for the special needs kids. We would definitely need four because I would need one more downtown. But those sped kids come out and ELL come out at 2:30. So if if the high school, their half day is 10:45, they go in, say, 8 to 10:45, they'd have to go back at 10:30, I mean, at 2:30 to pick up the next bunch. JFK, right now, I have three buses. With the extra six graders that I have seen on the survey, we would probably need six only because of the areas of town that they're in. Say they get out at 11 o'clock. I don't have a a half a day time for them yet. So there's still six buses would be dropping off at their their 7:55, going back at 11, getting everybody home, going back again at two because they've been getting out at 2:05. And I've got three buses that are running right now, bringing ELL and and students with services home. Ryan Road, Leeds, Bridge Street, and Jackson Street, I'm running three buses right now plus, and this is not, well, the high school and JFK is not including the MPS buses. But I have three buses right now, running the elementaries plus my three MPS buses and Vampool. If they went in from nine to 12, they have to go back at 3 o'clock and hit every single one of them. With the counts that I'm getting, it leads alone, I need seven buses to get those students home at the midday. And I've got three of them up now at Leeds. So it's going to be a full three tiers in the late afternoon. Probably with all nine buses, depending on the counts, because we still have kids on waiting lists. And I I don't know how many of those are going to be added on to these counts.
Okay, thank you.
What I wanted to let the committee know is for the transportation, I want you to understand that I expect the cost would increase by more than 50,000. But at this moment, I can't tell you exactly what it would be.
Okay. Are you also member Levy? Okay. John, you had your hand up. Was that to respond to this similar?
I just wanted to say that, to put it in context, I think basically what Kami just said, I think Tammy is confirming that it would be much more than 50,000 because three tiers with nine buses is a regular transportation contract. So just to bring the students home at the end of the day, she's saying now would cost as much as we normally spend for transportation plus whatever else we're doing in the middle of the day.
To clarify, is that per week? Is that 50,000?
No, 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 that was not per week. Sorry.
What what would, what period of time would 50,000 cover or whatever number is thrown out?
So it would be from now until the end of the implementation of this model. So we're we're thinking, you know, when I said that I felt it would easily be $50,000, I was thinking that this model would last probably for the rest of the year or at least potentially for the rest of the year. But just what Tammy just said makes me feel like $50,000 is a very lowball figure.
Okay, member Kaufman, you had your hand up.
I did, thank you. So I'd wanted to say just a couple of quick things. Then Dr. Provost, I had a couple of quick questions for you.
Sure.
First of all, just on a very positive note, I mean, it does feel like most members of the community, our educators, our families, and certainly many members of the school committee want to offer some full day. And so we have two models here. And, you know, I personally, I I said which one I I value more, but I'm happy with both. And I just think that's great that we've reached this point and tomorrow will be. I I think everybody should be happy and a sign of relief, if you will, that we will offer some in in the coming weeks, we'll offer some full day option for kids. I mean, sorry, some in-person option for kids. The other thing, and I really want to thank you, Dr. Provost, and the maintenance staff and the principals and everybody. And the public really needs to know that by waiting, not by default, this wasn't intentional, but the great advantage in waiting is that we've been really able to take advantage of all the science that's come out as a result of other schools opening. I think our association with Dr. Allen out of Harvard has been maybe the premier sort of thing that gets a lot of attention. But, you know, Dr. Provost, if you want to, just, it just, it's amazing that we've got filters in every classroom. We've got, we've got science looking at each classroom in terms of the air exchange rates. We've got ventilation that's been better. We we're so much further advanced now in terms of the health and safety measures and protecting our kids and our adults than we would have been two months ago. So as as irritating and frustrating as I know for some folks in terms of the delay, I just want to say, in terms of safe and health, safety and healthy measures, it's been a, it's been a godsend. I I feel so much better now than I did. And I totally voted for remote in September and I'm I'm perfectly satisfied in having some adults and some children return to our schools now. And that's because we've made our schools and and our buildings safer. So I just want to say that. And then, Dr. Provost, I, two quick questions. One, I'm sorry, but I'm still a little bit confused with the full-time remote teacher option. It was my understanding that that was almost a third op, a third choice for families. And I think that was in some of the literature that we sent out that some families can choose a full week of synchronous instruction with a remote teacher. But probably would not be their current teacher. Did I miss the boat on that? Am I confused?
No, I don't think you've missed anything. I I think what, what the new piece here is that we've been discussing is the the concept of breaking down the affiliation with the school to provide remote learning if that's what's necessary. So in all of them, all of the different iterations we put together, the six different types, what what Principal Madden was discussing tonight, we were always trying to keep students with their grade level team. So the first preference was for their teacher. The second preference was for at least a grade level team at their current school. What we began talking about is there may be some situations where you have all of the teachers tied up with in-person learning in a in a school because of the the demand for in-person learning at that school. And so then what do you do with the the few remaining who require remote learning? And what we said was, we could do essentially a a virtual transfer to another school and allow those students to join the remote class by being taught at another another school by where the situation is different, where you already have a lot of teachers dedicated to teaching in the remote model.
But we also theoretically, couldn't we be talking about a teacher that maybe for medical reasons or otherwise is not returning to the school building? And that teacher could potentially be teaching 100% remote to hopefully the same grade level students?
Yes, but I mean, that that teacher is going to have a building assignment somewhere. So I'm saying that that, for those kids who may end up assigned with that teacher, it may be essentially transferring over to that teacher's classroom.
Okay, so a lot of this will be determined based on how things play out. But, right. I mean, it sounds like another option that we really, we haven't presented too well and we don't really know when that's going to be available, if it's going to be available. But I certainly did hear a number of people speak tonight about if there, if it meant more synchronous remote learning with a new teacher, that that might be a preference for them. But I understand we we won't know until people make official decisions. So, and my last question, Dr. Provost, is I I just think we, I would appreciate hearing where you sit on this.
So I, first of all, I think it's important to point this out because I know it's been presented tonight as the NACE plan versus some other plan. However, you know, the two full day plan actually came to us in the middle of July from NACE. So it's it's really just Denise's original plan versus their their current thinking. We've done a lot of work on the the original plan that was that was put forth. We have, we've done everything we can to imagine the different ways to implement it that would provide the most support. I would say that the direction I received after bringing that out last month was that it it didn't provide enough for the remote learners. And I think we've made a lot of adjustments to provide more support for remote learners within that. And so, you know, my my belief is that the first plan, the the full day plan is actually better. When you look at the numbers, it provides more support for in-person and more support for remote. As as Denise McCann said, they're not, nothing is perfect. There's no, you know, there's no optimal solution that is is clearly better than the others. But based on the numbers of of in-person and instruction and the numbers of hours of remote support we're able to provide, I do think the two full day model is better.
Thank you.
Okay, member Goldman.
Thank you. Mayor Narckowitz and perhaps member Seraphy Cox, I just want to check in on the process for this voting. We're voting on a motion now for a for the full day model from tonight's presentation. If it doesn't pass, does it mean that we default to the half? Or does it mean that the new one didn't pass and the old one?
I would, again, I would argue, I would argue that there'd be another, there'd need to be another motion. I, you know, I yeah, this is the model, this is the motion that member Kaufman wanted to make. And so that's fine. We're affirming a two-day, a full two-day plan. Or, and if that fails, then then another motion will have to be made. So.
But what if it's split? So what if we go five-five on the two-day and then it goes, I mean, for the full day? And then it goes to the half day and we're five-five? So then it defaults to the two-day? Because that's the original one?
Again, I guess we'll have to, I guess I I will have to understand what we voted on two weeks ago, which was a plan that had two full days of in-person instruction as part of the hybrid plan. And obviously, details have been fleshed out and questions have been answered about remote. But that was substantially what we voted for. So we won't know until we vote. So I'd rather we, instead of the hypotheticals, it feels like we should vote.
I agree with you. And my last point is that if we vote, if we split on the new full day and then we split on the half day, it might be that people who would have, if it's going to be full day, people who were interested in the half day might prefer the new one with more remote access than the one we voted for.
Well, there there can be lots of motion, you know, just because two motions fail doesn't mean a third motion can't be made.
Okay, great.
We can make motions all night. I'd prefer we not do that. But, yeah, so.
That's what I was looking for. Thank you very much.
Okay. Member Fallon.
Thank you. I just, I do want to, I just do want to say that I don't want people to think that because we vote one way or another, that their voices haven't been heard. This is not an easy decision. It's not that one person's voice is stronger or more valid than another's. But as the person who, on our committee, you've appointed to sign the warrants, I do want to say the fact that the half day plan potentially comes at a cost, the fact that negotiations have come at a cost, the fact that we're going to be considering a late start plan on Thursday, that one of them comes with the cost, I am very much concerned. Enrollment is down. The October census is down 154 students. If we lose money or if the Student Opportunity Act, they eliminate the hold harmless provision, we are going to lose money. And so I just, I really hope that in the process of all of our decision-making, everyone is really understanding that a lot of our short-term decisions are going to have pretty big long-term impacts. And so, so that's why, among all of the other reasons and because our administrative leadership team are in support of the full day model and we've heard from the Commissioner of Education and from so many families. But I also am concerned about the the potential impact of spending more money that we don't necessarily have, that I am in favor of the full day plan right now.
Okay, is there anyone else who wishes to speak at this point? Okay, so the motion on the table is in, is an affirmative vote is to go with the full day plan. And I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Just to clarify, please, Mayor, that what, just because I think, I just want to make sure my colleague Goldman understands it, it's the two-day, it's the two full day hybrid plan that was presented and discussed this evening.
Thank you.
Member Gold.
Uh, no.
Mayor Narckowitz.
Yes.
Member Busansky.
Yes.
Member Fallon.
Yes.
Member Seraphy Cox.
No.
Member Condon.
Yes.
Member Levy.
No.
Member Kaufman.
Yes.
Member Goldman.
Yes.
Member Voss.
No.
The vote is six in favor and four against.
Okay, so the motion is adopted, six-four. So, so as Member Kaufman stated and others have stated, so this gives the superintendent and the administrative leadership team and our staff the, um, the direction on how to move forward. And again, that was the only item on our public agenda for this evening. So we have one other item, which is a request for an executive session. I just want to check with the Chair of Negotiating Subcommittee that that is, that is a, you need that motion, so I'll ask you to make that motion then.
Okay, let me find the wording. Request to enter a executive session under Massachusetts General Law Open Meeting, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, A Three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the Chair so declares.
Second.
Hey, so there's been a motion made and seconded by Member Levy. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mayor Narcoitz.
Yes.
Member Busansky.
Yes.
Member Fallon.
Yes.
Member Seraphy Cox.
Yes.
Member Condon.
Yes.
Member Levy.
Yes.
Member Kaufman.
Yes.
Member Goldman.
Yes.
Member Voss.
Yes.
And Member Gold.
Yes.
Vote is unanimous.
Okay, so to the members of the public, the school committee will now move into executive session under Mass General Law because to hold these conversations in public would be detrimental to our negotiating position. I will also let the public know that we will adjourn directly from executive session. We will not return to open session. So we would ask members of the public now to please leave the meeting. Thank you for joining us this evening. But we will take a pause here while we wait for members who are on the school committee or administrative team to.